All right, Jeff, you ready? I guess he's ready.
I'm ready.
All right.
Hello.
Hi, I'm just about to open the meeting and I didn't want you to have to make a grand entrance, so come on in and have a seat. We will have you come up here to the front at some point. All right. All right, here I go, Paul. Hereby open Board of Selectment Meeting, August 30th, 2018, 5:30 PM at the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being taped for viewing on cable as well as YouTube. And we are here tonight mostly to do our Town Administrator Candidate interviews. The first one is here, but we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna jump right in at our 5:30 PM agenda item with our first candidate, Adam Wilson. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you for having me here.
Wherever you are most comfortable, you can certainly go. You can go up to the podium, you can stay where you are. We actually have a mic right above your head, or you can come up to the front. Depends on how much space you...
I think I'm fine right here.
Okay. That's fine. So we have a set of questions to ask you. We'll just sort of go around the table, and then we'll give you time at the end to ask us anything you'd like. So, welcome. Thank you for coming to Rutland. What ferry did you take?
We caught the new boat.
Oh.
I should just introduce my wife, Polly's in the back there.
Hi, nice to meet you. So we'll start right in with sort of the general. Can you tell us about yourself?
Certainly.
And then after that, can you tell us about Rutland? And why you would be the right candidate to be Rutland's next Town Administrator?
So, I know you've probably had the chance to peruse my, you know, my resume and my background. I was, been living on Martha's Vineyard for quite a long time, 25 years. First being a business owner there, and then moving into municipal management because of my educational background. So for five years, I was the zoning board administrator in Oak Bluffs. And that led me to becoming the Town Administrator in Aquina, which I served for seven years. Recently, I left the position because I had an opportunity to do consulting work in the wind energy sector that's emerging here in the United States economy. I was approached to be a consultant for one of the Danish firms that is looking to build offshore. And so I've been doing that for the last, last year. However, they seem to be going in a different direction in terms of their... They're still looking at offshore, but they're looking at a lot of onshore opportunities that brings them to Texas and Nebraska. And I'm realizing that because I have such a strong background in municipal management, that I should really look at getting back into municipal management as a way of enhancing my career. I've enjoyed living on the Vineyard for many years, but this opportunity with Rutland does provide me a chance to advance my skills, my skill sets in administration at the town level. And also gives an opportunity for Polly and I to look at a housing market that's much more reasonable than what Martha's Vineyard has to offer. So divorced about five years ago and remarried, and we're not, we're not finding, we're not gonna find the housing on the Vineyard. So you have to really start looking elsewhere. And certainly in this wonderful area, there's a lot more housing diversity, housing stock. There's a lot more opportunities, so. Rutland also would be, I think, a really good challenge for me in that it is a larger town. It is fund accounting, you know, but it is more of a budget to work with. It's more, bigger departments to work with. And it seems like the right mix of residential and agricultural and commercial that I find very appealing, since I come from a very rural residential community.
Thank you. I'm realizing, and I'm gonna backtrack, you introduced yourself. We didn't introduce ourselves.
That's all right.
So I'm Sheila Dibb. I'm the current Chair. I've been on the Board for 11 years. We do have a member, our fifth member, who is on the phone, which I needed to announce for the camera anyway. And he will, for the most part, be listening in. His name is Jeff Stillings. He's typically right there. And then I will go to the left.
Wayne Walker. I'm in my second term, so I've been on the Board four years.
Skip Glock, I've been on about 11 years.
11 years.
11 years.
I'm Leah Whitman. I was just elected on the Board in past May.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so thanks. Now we've done the little introductions back and forth, and we will move on to question number two.
This is gonna be a three-part question.
Okay.
But I'll give them to you one at a time.
Thank you.
Communication and consensus are key aspects of this job. Our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them. And town boards and committees expect the selectmen to be supportive of them. How do you interact with citizens? And what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication to citizens?
Well, previously, as I worked as the Town Administrator for Aquina, I was also the front desk receptionist. So I had like this sort of dual responsibility of overseeing, being the conduit between the Board of Selectment and the various department heads, but responding to citizens' needs as they walk through the door. And that was everything from the mundane, like, how do I get a climbing permit? Right up to, you know, zoning enforcement and other violations that, or other perceived problems that were going on in the town. As a Town Administrator, I expect to be in Town Hall every day. I expect to... Showing up is a very vital, important piece of being a... Because you are sort of the, you are the representative. You're there every day. You know, your Board of Selectmen is not there every day, for the most part. They drop in, they stop by, they set up for meetings. But you're the person, as the Town Administrator, that is the face of the town. And I, over the seven years, I've come to know that as far as working with a very small community. Actually, working with a small community and two governments. Because the Wampanoag Tribe of Gayhead is also in the town of Aquina. So you have to really be the face of, and the expectation is that if someone, a citizen, comes in and really has a problem, you have to stop what you're doing and take the time, sit down, and at the very least, hear what they have to say. And see if there's some way you can find a remedy. I'm a big believer in remedies. I'm a big believer that when there are problems, you know, you have to find some kind of remedy that hopefully works towards a solution. So I very much intend to be a part of, very much a part of the town of Rutland.
The second part. What is, should be, what is your experience in building and working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is the Town Administrator's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the Board to address specific issues?
So when I was hired by the Town of Oak Bluffs, I became their first zoning administrator. And from that, I also took on the administrative assistance role when they first created their Community Preservation Committee. And served as an administrative assistant to several other historical boards. When I became the Town Administrator in Aquina, we had no personnel committee. We had an enormous task about three years into the job of setting up citizen committees to relocate the Gayhead Lighthouse, which was an enormous undertaking, but successful in our endeavors. So to answer your question, it's important to recognize those kinds of citizen committees that are needed for the town. And to provide them as much administrative assistance and counsel that they need. Once again, as a conduit between their appointments by the Board of Selectmen and working with the various departments that may be affected by their committee work.
And the last part. How do you manage in a context where there is a majority on an issue, but nevertheless, there is a strong minority view on the Board or in a town meeting?
Well, it's important to hear both sides of the story. It's important to build consensus. If you have a majority opinion that favors towards moving in a certain direction, you certainly have to give the minority the opportunity to present their views. But if it comes to a town meeting vote and the majority prevails, then the goal is to bring that particular issue to fruition. Bring it forward.
All right, thank you.
Rutland continues to grow at a, at a even increasing rate, ever-increasing rate, although which are growing too fast.
Well, I noticed in the Wikipedia about the town that population exponentially has grown in the last 30 years. And so you have a, you do have a, which is great as far as new growth's concerned, as far as your budgeting. But it does present a dilemma towards people who've lived here for a long time and adoptive of the old, you know, old small town that's growing rapidly beyond, beyond, to the borders. But I'm sorry, you wanted to ask me a question?
You did quite well. I mean, my thoughts of growth is different than most people's, but that's all right.
Okay.
What experience would you, would you bring to the town in the area of growth management in dealing with these, with these impacts? This is a three-part question. What is your experience with municipal building, construction, and renovation?
We did, we did some substantial work on the Town Hall when I first came on Board. In terms of interior, we had, we went to town meeting and appropriated from sort of free cash and some warrant articles, the ability to spruce up Town Hall, new flooring, new paint, re-roofing, those kinds of things. We also, as I told you, we raised $3.4 million to relocate the 450-ton Gayhead Lighthouse from its area over to a safe place to go. I've done other, one of my other credits is that after Hurricane Sandy, a very important part of Aquina, the Lobsterville Road, had washed out. And so we jumped right on top of that in terms of getting, as we worked with FEMA, but we worked to get that road functioning again within 10 days of the storm. Bringing in the local contractors and getting it fixed. Did a short-term borrowing until FEMA repaid us the 75% that we were allotted for that particular issue.
How was it working for FEMA? I, this is out of context, but how was it?
Well, I can tell you that after Hurricane Sandy, Aquina was the first town to get reimbursement from FEMA for damage caused by the storm.
Good.
It was a small project, but nonetheless, for Aquina, it was very important that we got that road shorted, shorted again, put down the Jersey barriers, repaved it, and got it, got it functioning again.
Do you have a, do you have a working knowledge of Chapter 30B and your procurement?
I do. I'm not certified as, but I'm certainly, over the years, both working for the Community Preservation Committee in Oak Bluffs and working as a Town Manager, have put myself through many 30B applications. So I know how to use the central register. Like I said, I procured the entire $3.4 million project, which included hundreds of thousands of dollars in procurement for excavation, for engineering, for disturbed soil replacement, and all kinds of things. So I'm very familiar, you know, I've procured everything from a $6,000 painting contract to a $400,000 lighthouse relocation contract.
You probably answered this with that quick answer with, but... What has been your experience in successfully and unsuccessfully acquiring and administering grants?
I've had a lot of success with the CPA Act for both Aquina and for Oak Bluffs. Put together a lot of different contracts, mostly in historic preservation. A good example of a successful procurement was knowing that the town's beach needed a boardwalk. That the area of public, excuse me, parking for the residents involved a very large sand bar, sand dune that had to be walked over to get to the beach. And it was finally realized that there's no way that people could continue to climb this. So we had to engineer to figure out a way to build an 800-foot boardwalk from the parking lot to the beach, to the beach area. And, you know, the success of that story was that we anticipated the cost being $40,000. And so we went to town meeting and to a free cash warrant, put the money aside. Then we went out and bidded on it. And the bids came back at like $82,000, $83,000. So we knew that we didn't have enough money. And we had to wait until we had another town meeting, knowing that we had secured a bid amount. And then rebid, I'm sorry, put together the cash so we'd have it available, rebid. And we're successful in getting the boardwalk installed at the price that it came in at.
What has been your experience in creating provisions and management for regional services in a town?
Well, regional services are a big part of the struggle that the town that I used to work for has. Is that there's a lot of regional expenses added to the budget that the town has no control over. Without a school, we have, our education budget is mandated by the regional assessments that come for both the elementary and high school populations. So the balance has been trying to find the revenue to offset the costs when suddenly six families move into Aquina, and the expense bill in the budget goes up $175,000. The only, it's kind of a necessary thing to understand how regional applications work and to make sure that there's a fair share agreement between those involved in the regional, in the regional expenses. And I think that the best part of that is just being very open and transparent about how those things cost. Taxpayers really wanna know, because some of those regional assessments can be quite substantial, especially with schools. That you've gotta let them know, this is why it's costing this much. So really, open communication is very important, as well as notification that once you meet with, when the school board meets, go over its budget, making yourself available to know and understand what's going on.
Thank you.
This is another multi-part question.
It's all we have.
Yes, that's fine.
So we wanna hear a little bit about what your HR responsibilities have been thus far. So I'll kind of lump them all together to give you ideas to think about. What kind of experience have you had with hiring and firing authority?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. In what positions?
So as a Town Administrator, I'm a Chief Administrative Officer of the Town. So I don't really have hiring and firing authority. That's, that's the CEO's, the selectmen have that responsibility. That's in the statute. So, but I've been very involved in, the hiring process has usually gone through the Personnel Committee. And I've been counsel to the Personnel Committee in terms of making people when they apply for jobs. So I, when I came on Board in Aquina, I was responsible for seeing the town through four retirements. Building inspector, fire chief, treasurer, and accountant. Within the first three, four years, all retired. So we had to work diligently with the Personnel Committee in terms of putting together a fair and equitable selection process for those replacements. Like I said, I don't work on the firing aspect of things. The only thing is, it's obvious that if you're having difficulty with an employer, and employee's going in the wrong direction, and you're getting a sense that somebody might be losing their job, documentation is really the most critical component. You don't just let things pile up until the bubble bursts and everyone starts, you, you have to have a series of, a history to show this is why someone has to get let go.
Have you negotiated or implemented benefit changes, like health insurance or...?
Yes, I mean, I, in my town, the treasurer basically works mostly HR responsibilities. But together, she and I were responsible for overseeing any mandated changes coming down from the state. And incorporated those, you know, into the personnel bylaws. So, actually, when I came on Board, we had no personnel bylaws. So I, I worked a templated draft to get that in order. And then as various things came in, you know, involving like vacation, part-time workers, there's a lot of things that come down from the state that are mandated that you have to make sure you incorporate into your bylaws and then correctly budget for.
Oh, we're gonna slide right into that whole budget thing. So what is your experience in developing the municipal budget? How does that process work in Aquina?
So, obviously, been through seven budget cycles. Annuals, and then a variety of specials that I've come across. Worked, basically worked in consult with the financial team. So worked with the accountant, the assessor, the treasurer, and the tax collector. In sort of developing the different components needed. Also helped to create a finance and advisory committee, a FinCom, which the town never had before. Which took up the role of, Citizens Board, that took up the role of reviewing department budget expenses.
So is it an advisory or a finance?
Finance and advisory committee.
So does it have the statutory abilities of a true finance committee, or is it kind of a...?
It's an advisory board. So they can make recommendations at town meeting.
Okay.
When you come up to different budgets and different warrant articles, especially spending articles.
Yep.
They can weigh in. They can, they can say on town meeting whether or not they, as an advisory board, recommend this spending or recommend this.
And how do they get seated? Who chooses that committee?
The selectmen do.
Okay. Have you yourself presented budget at town meeting, or is that the role of others, once you get to town meeting?
Once we get to town meeting, the budget's usually broken down and voted on line by line.
Okay.
I'm really more responsible for handling department head warrant articles for like various spending, whether they're raisin appropriate, or they're free cash, or they're, or, and then, of course, I've worked with the departments when they've had to bond significant items, like our fire truck that we bonded two years ago. So, but I definitely at town meeting, end up being the moderator, and I work together to present the warrant articles for spending. And then I vote like everyone else, I'm a resident of the town, so.
Oh, right. So, but you sit up front?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously. And then does Aquina have a capital improvement committee? Or is finance and advisory sort of taking up some of that when it comes to long-term projects?
The Town of Aquina needs a capital improvement committee.
Okay.
But it being such a small town that, and very little infrastructure to work with other than its beaches and various things, most of the capital improvements have come from the department heads.
So what is Aquina's budget?
The last, most recent budget was $3.7.
And what's your tax, do you know the tax rate?
It's like $5.50.
$5.50.
For $1,000.
And, okay, so based on that, you just said $3.7?
$3.7 million.
What's, what is the town's position and your position, or what was your position, on the use of free cash and stabilization? What was Aquina's situation with that?
So we were very successful in generating a lot of free cash. We, early in my tenure, we brought in an individual under contract to start looking at tax title. And we had significant issues with a number of properties where taxes were due. And so we brought in a specialist to basically identify those properties. And, you know, for the benefit of the town, put, put properties into tax title so that, you know, they ended up getting sold or whatever, the town would be recovered for its expenses. Well, the remarkable thing was that once the proper notification came about that properties were now in tax title, all of a sudden taxes got paid. People suddenly stepped up, and as a result, we were averaging several hundred thousand dollars every year in free cash. So from, from the added revenue that we didn't anticipate.
And did that ever balance out? You were there for seven years. Was that a consistent seven years worth of...?
It started off smaller, but it grew. It grew towards the end of my tenure.
And you said you had to help with the hiring of the treasurer collector? That was one of the retirements that you dealt with?
It was, no, the, it was the tax collector.
Oh, it was the tax collector.
It was supposed to be an additional assigned duty of hers, and she came to you and says, "I can't do this, I don't have time." It was too comp, you know, and I understood exactly where she came from. So we put forward a warrant to hire someone as a, you know, as a subcontractor to do that work.
Okay.
Now, but to your question, yes, our free cash, definitely, a percentage of it always went towards stabilization, a general stabilization fund. We had several other stabilization funds that we'd put money into, some of which went towards capital improvement, so. And then we, we also assigned money for OPEB. So there was money put in for OPEB accounts. So we, we chose it while we liked to sock it away for a rainy day.
Do you know offhand any balances? Where were you as far as stabilization, even the general?
We had a million dollars in general stabilization.
When you left?
Yes.
Okay. What, have you developed finance policies of your own in the time that you were in Aquina? And then can you define a recap sheet?
I didn't, I left it up to the financial team to actually do their financial policies. They're, they're appointed by the Board of Selectmen. They really should be working in conjunction with them towards that vision of the town. The recap is exactly what it says. It's a recap of the budget as it stands, heading in towards the end of the year, looking at the levy limit, and making a determination that if we're gonna be above or below it, and what that would mean in terms of sending the bills out. If you're gonna be above the levy limit, if you're gonna find yourself in a deficit situation, you might have to move forward with a special meeting to put together a budget, a free cash law, to make sure you're covered. So the recap involves the assessors, it involves the accountant, involves the town clerk. It's basically reporting to the Bureau of Accounts the financial status of your, of your town as it goes into, is in the same fiscal year. But looking at a tax recap that might have to raise the tax recap, raise the tax levy limit in order to meet the demands of the budget when you get to the expenses at the end of the year.
You make that sound easy.
It's impossible to... I know it well enough to be able to give you that terms, those terms, and how it works.
What is the most serious finance issue you've faced in your municipal career?
Well, it was exactly that. It was being over the levy limit. My assessor did an analysis, working with the accountant, and saw that we were going to be... She initially reported to the DOR that we were gonna be $172,000 over the levy limit. And in the end, though, it was only like 41. But it still required a special town meeting to draw money from, I think we draw money from stabilization to cover the difference. What happened was, the Department of Revenue found out about this levy limit and wouldn't let us send out our, our second quarter tax bills until we resolved the issue.
I can imagine. When did you find out about...?
It was like in November.
In November of the fiscal year that started in July?
Of the fiscal year, yes.
What happened to town meeting that they realized they were so far off from the initial budget predictions in the spring?
They, well, they agreed to fund the balance difference. There was some discussion about it. I kinda, the faults that occurred were two different factors. One involving the treasurer and one involving the accountant on a miscap, a loan was paid off that still was supposed to be loaned out over like three, there was a mistake made.
Okay.
So that's what caused like the balance, that was one of these caused the balance budget.
So they mistakenly paid off the loan dollars?
They mistakenly paid off a loan that was supposed to be loaned out for another three years.
Gotcha.
And that, that caused a significant loss of expense budget line item.
Pretty serious.
And there was a second reason, and I can't remember what it was with the accountant. But ultimately, in the end, I actually went to town meeting and I made a mea culpa that, you know, it's my fault. And the town just said, okay, because it was, it really was a relatively small amount of money.
At that point, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, smaller than you. Did you, now, were you monitoring receipts and expenditures day to day? It sounds like you were. And evaluating budgetary performance when it came to the department heads? So working budget day to day, you know?
Well, my accountant would put together, if the department heads requested monthly reports, you know, budget reports, they would get them. But, you know, for certain budgets, you could pretty much count on, small budgets especially, you could do quarterly, quarterly ana, quarterly analysis.
Okay.
The more important thing was that when you got closer to the end of the year, and you saw that certain department heads had budgets either flush with cash or in deficit, to work with the accountant to make those balance. You know, obviously, the, when you do your, your audit at the end of the year, you wanna, you wanna be able to say that you finished in the black.
Yep. And the last, you actually alluded to this. So the original question was, do you have any experience dealing with a regional school district? Obviously, in your case, I know you do, whose budget is independent of the towns.
Right.
What is the relationship that Aquina has with the regional school system, in particular, from the budgetary perspective?
Well, there are concerned citizens that serve on the regional, we have a regional high school.
Yep.
And the elementary school system... And the elementary school system, which offers school choice, starts with a K to five in Chilmark and then has K to eights in the other towns. So, but we have active representation for both of those, as well as a superintendent's office during budget meetings. And they report back to the selectmen and, and also to the finance committee what's going on in terms of that, those budgetary line items.
Great. All right, thank you. That was a lot, I know.
That's okay.
This one's four part.
Four parts. They'll get better, slightly better.
The town has several, several contracts expiring in June of this fiscal year, so collective bargaining experience is very important to us. What is your history in dealing with unions, union issues and union negotiations?
So, in my seven years while I was town administrator, I did negotiate two contracts with the CBA with the police force. Small police force, only, you know, a chief, a sergeant and six patrol officers, but still with CPA and still having to go through negotiations, you know, twice around on three-year contracts that, you know, involve, had my involvement as well as the selectmen. The thing about negotiating any collective bargaining agreement is you do wanna try and have a semblance that it's fair for both sides. But you also have to go in with the knowledge of knowing that if you give this, if you give the union anything, they'll never take it back. Once they have a some particular something, you'll never be able to negotiate in the future to withdraw that, that, that particular feature in the contract. So you have to be very wary of that going into negotiations. Cause once it's theirs, it's theirs forever. And now, I would tell you though, that the two CBAs that I negotiated were amenable. You know, they weren't, they weren't like shouting matches and screaming. The, once again, the main thing is open communication really and, and work diligently at it. It's important to them, it's important to the town. So the important thing is meet often and regularly and keep the lines of communication open so that you can get to a settlement.
All right, you, you already answered the first part of this question, but the second part. What contracts have you bargained and what was your process?
So, well in advance of a contract expiring is the establishment of the negotiator who's gonna negotiate, negotiating team, who's gonna represent which side. There's usually, I would put forward a recap of what is in the existing contract so everyone knows as a baseline as to what we're working with. And then it's, from then on, it's really just the establishment of meetings with the hope that you'll get the contract approved and signed off before the current one expires.
Okay. How did you involve the selectmen, labor council and department heads?
Department heads weren't really the issue for me because it was only one department. It was the police department I was working with. Usually there was one representative from the board of selectmen that served on the negotiating team and, and then the accountant, cause I needed somebody who could crunch the numbers. That's really how I would set, I would set it up. I mean, you can, depending on the con, the union, depending on the contract, there could be more people involved. It just depends on what situation you're dealing with.
What is your experience with grievances, mediation, arbitration? And what is your ongoing relationship with unions?
So we handled several different grievances. Grievances were really directed towards the personnel committee. It was a set of bylaws that handle grievances, once again, looking for remedies. Probably in this application for this job, this is probably the weakest area for me because of the size of the town. Didn't really handle too much in terms of arbitration. But maintained a very well-balanced relationship with town council on a number of issues, specifically in legal matters between the town and the tribe. So, very important to have a strong working relationship with council. Cause you're gonna rely on them in any situation where you're involved with arbitration or agreements that you don't want litigation to be a factor.
Thank you.
This one's a four-part too. But how would you, how would your staff and your colleagues describe you as your leadership style?
Let's see. So, I'm, I'm, I'm a very dedicated individual. I believe in coming to work every day. I have sort of a persuasive style of management, if you wanted to label my management style. I'm a big believer in capable accomplishment. So, when I see that the town or the board wants to go in a certain direction, it's up to me to be the convincing factor to get us in that direction, to get us to fruition on whatever we wanna pursue. I do form, I do strongly believe in like a ethical conduct and also being a conduit, the position demands that he or she be the touchstone between the executive officers of the town and the department heads. You wanna have that ability for the department heads to come to you with their concerns and take them to the selectmen. You wanna have the ability, the trust, the selectmen come to you by concern of the department heads, you bring it to the department heads and acting as the in-between. But personally, I think I'm pretty gregarious, I'm pretty outgoing. So, I think people like, don't have a problem walking through my door to talk to me. And as far as either the CEOs of the town or the department heads, the door's always open. It's not closed.
How long do you feel it'll take for a town administrator to get a complete handle on the town's complexities?
There certainly will be a period of acclimatization to the, to the job. The job itself really actually has its own set of parameters. It's just really getting to know the character, the personalities and the characters and the town itself. So, I mean, when I came up to Aquina from Oak Bluffs in a new, in, as the town administrator, there was a lot to learn, but coming in every day and putting the time in, I, I quickly, I quickly got the gist of things.
What would you, what would you do in your first hundred days here in Rutland?
Well, I would really wanna get to know the community. I would start right off by having personal meetings with all the department heads. First priority is to get to know them, get to know what's going on with their departments, what's going on with their budgets, their personnel. Polly and I would hopefully look towards finding housing. The ultimate goal would be to live in the town you work in. I think that's an important factor in terms of being the town administrator. Get to know the administrative support staff of the board of selectmen. Really just start to know what it's like living up here at the top of Massachusetts.
Well, that pretty much answered that one. How do, how does a town administrator promote good working relations among town employees?
I, I think being available is like one of the key ingredients. Understanding both sides of a subject. Just the ability to listen. It's, it's really, but listening skills are so important in these kinds of jobs. You have to hear what people are saying to you.
How, how should, how should a board develop, development, ma, develop, maintain and strong, strong and productive relationship with the administrator?
I think really the establishment of trust that both sides understand what's going on and there's no hidden agendas, there's no backdoor negotiations, there's no, you don't wanna see yourself in a situation where something's being micromanaged. Keep it open and above board and be, be transparent.
Thank you.
All righty, can you please list and explain the top three most important roles, functions and or responsibilities that you see for the town administrator for the town of Rutland?
So, being a town administrator, it involves being a presence, that you are very much involved in the town and its municipal functions and its political agenda. That you have a firm grasp of that. Other things involved with being a town administrator are, like I said, visibility, accessibility, communication skills, liaison to, like I said, to the boards, department heads, and also liaison for the executive or for the state officials. State and officials are very much a part of what goes on in every town. So knowing and understanding agendas that are going on at the state level are very important too.
All right, we asked a lot of complicated questions, and so, thank you for allowing us to go through those. Is there anybody that had any follow-ups to anything that Adam talked about?
I do.
Yeah.
Micromanaging. What's your feelings toward that and how would you stop it and prevent it? If you, if that actually happens?
What you wanna do is you wanna, if you, if you see a situation where something's being micromanaged and it's, it's a detriment, then you really have to put those people together to sort of explain why this isn't working. You know, and I'm a big believer in, I see situations where, like especially with email correspondence, all of a sudden two people are talking to each other and they're, they're working out things, but they really are not working out to the betterment of, of the, the whole concept. So, if you see that, you have to, you have to stop the emails and you have to bring them into your office and say, this is not working. So, you only wanna, unless there's a specific project that's like really very detailed and needs someone assigned to it to, you know, deal with it one-on-one, you should try and leave everything in, within the general realm of things.
Good.
I don't, like I said, I don't have a problem if, if, if say you wanted to have something specifically built, procured and everything else, but someone wants to, someone on the board wants to be the clerk of the works and wants to make sure that it happens. That, there's no problem in that regard because they're actually helping me out. But if someone's going behind, if they're not using me for issues and problems that are arising, being brought to them and going directly to the department head, being out of the loop doesn't really, it's not very beneficial. It's not what you're paying me for.
Thank you.
Take a second.
Yeah.
I don't have a question for you, I just wanna make a comment that I was there when they moved the Gayhead Lighthouse.
Were you really?
Yes.
And I'll let you know that if you're really fascinated in knowing more about it, Nova did a documentary on it.
Yeah, we're in it and we watched it and we saved the tape, yeah.
Fabulous, fabulous. It was a, it was an amazing project.
It really was, it was really something to watch.
Amazing also, cause like I said, it was three point four million raised and we only had a budget of like four point one, so.
Yeah.
We raised almost the same amount of money that we have had in our town budget.
Well, I think I had conversations with a couple of the locals about that at the time, cause obviously there I am and I'm interested in that. It was amazing to me to think that there had not been, almost an easier time knowing the population of Martha's Vineyard in general.
Right.
To raise that, that money, because it sounds like it was a battle. At the time, it sounded like it was a process to get it, it didn't just come to you easily and I guess I sort of thought it would.
Well, it, what was, actually the remarkable aspect was the, the grants written to the other town CPCs.
Ah.
And all the town's historical preservation CPCs all voted appropriated sums towards the relocation.
Oh, that's nice.
It's the first time that CPA worked on a regional, a regional application.
That's very interesting, thank you.
So I have a question. As you have stated and you are aware, the population in Rutland has been increasing and continues to increase. With that comes additional tax money, but also additional, additional tax burden, right? So, how do you balance that when there's a big population influx? That maybe that tax influx doesn't necessarily offset the, do you any like?
Yeah, it's the painful process of expanding services to meet demand and justifying it through, through taxation. You hope to find a good budget in a good budgeting way with the, the taxes that you do assess, you know, whether it's residential, commercial, agricultural, although agricultural gets a lot of exemptions. I think that you have to really let the community be aware that the service demands are increasing because the population's increasing. So, if it's gonna need that many more people to take away refuse, you don't have enough. You're gonna have to budget for it because you can't expect, you don't wanna, you don't want your departments to be altruistic and just saying, well, just deal with the best we got. It doesn't, it's a breakdown in services when that happens. So, you have to, but you have to sort of carefully let your community know, it's like, this is where we've been, this is what everybody knows, but this is where we are now and you know what, this is where we're going. So, if, if people know and understand that, then, not that they're gonna be sympathetic, but at least they'll be accepting that their taxes might increase because of the additional demand for services.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any questions for us or anything you'd like to add, something that occurred to you?
Well, I wanna know how, it's my understanding that the town administrator's position was created three years ago.
No.
No?
It was created, no, it was funded.
Oh, it was funded, it was.
And approved eleven years ago.
Oh.
It sat unfunded up until four years ago. And so our first head administrator is actually sitting behind you, she was the first ever in the position.
So how did it go?
Hi, Adam.
Hi. We know each other.
Yeah.
It went well, it was a good town.
Good to hear. I, I only say that because, you know, there are, when you're coming into a town that's, I, I kinda read about how it was heavily debated about having a town administrator and it was not a, it was a majority, but it wasn't a, it wasn't a big majority, so.
Yep.
You know, the town, you're fortunate to have a good first administrator to lay the groundwork so that the next one coming in doesn't feel like they're on the moon.
Well, it clarifies why it wasn't funded for so long. Cause it's one thing, I mean, we see it the state legislature too, and you mentioned the importance of dealing with the state.
Yes.
Legislatures and, yeah, people sort of approved it, but then magically couldn't find the money for it for a long time. And, and we were there, we just couldn't find the money.
Right. And town administrators are, like I said, they're chief administrative officers. They're a vital component in the, in the function of any municipality and, but working, that working conjunction, working cooperation between the CEOs of the town and the other municipal people that work the town makes it, I think, a very key component in municipal management.
Anyone else, anything else?
Anything from the man on the phone?
Uh, I think he was planning to just listen unless he had something really specific to say. So apparently whatever you gave was enough.
Okay.
For the man on the phone. Is that, I'm thinking he was muting, he was gonna mute the phone unless he had something to say, so.
All right.
Can I answer a question?
Yeah.
Sir, the town, you told me once, your relationship with the fire chief, police chief and DPW superintendent? And if we were to call them, would they, would they likely tell us?
So the question was my relationship with the fire chief?
Fire, police and DPW.
The DPW.
If we called them, what would they say back?
I think they'd all be very strongly supportive of, you know, my candidacy here. I had a very good relationship. Well, my first fire chief, I had to convince him to retire, cause he was seventy-nine, so he was, he, but the, we went through a hiring process with that and then my DPW worker, DPW chief was excellent and a member of the tribe, so kind of a back and forth. So, go on, I'm sure if you called any Simon or Randy or Jay, they would all speak highly of me.
Thank you. Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, no.
All right.
Well, I do have a question, so I guess. So you thought of the island of the town, if you were offered this decision and were looking to ask, would you move to the town?
Yeah, I, you, you might've missed that part. He did talk about relocating and relocating actually into the town of Rutland, is that right?
That would be my hope.
Yep.
I think it's important for a town administrator to be a resident of the town.
That's an enormous move, an enormous change after being. That's an enormous move, an enormous change after being on the vineyard for
I couldn't agree with you more, but like I said, I've been on the island a good portion of my life and it's a wonderful place. It truly is, but it's also an island. And when, and living by a ferry schedule and living with a cost of living that's much higher. Currently, Paulie and I are in a rental situation. I'm not a property owner there. So that makes relocation a lot easier in the sense that we would easily enjoy probably the prospect of putting down new roots.
Thank you. All right. Now, anything else, Jeff? You good?
Yeah. Our next candidate, any chance that you could move your vote closer to the candidate who would be a little less choppy voting?
I can, I can do that. Yes, I'm sorry. We really appreciate you coming all the way out here. Was it about three hours round trip, two and a half?
No.
No, two.
No, it took a little over two hours once we got to Woods Hole.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. It was nice to meet you.
It's so nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciated the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming along, Polly. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
All right, we have 10 minutes before our next candidate is ready to start. And we had had a request to take a couple of things out of order, however, we had a hiccup with that. Bob, did you, I was going to deal with this right now. I don't want to keep Gary here if he doesn't need to be.
Oh, about the session?
Yeah.
Well, I would, I'd ask the board to pass over that.
Right, so I just want to let him know. I just want to hear in the room. So we had added something to our agenda on August 29th yesterday and Bob pointed out that we really didn't meet the 48-hour requirement, that it's not an emergent situation and he had a couple of questions about the side letter of agreement. And so we are going to pass over that for this time and Laura, can you add that to the 9-10 agenda? All right, that's it. Thank you. Did anybody want to have a brief discussion or do you want to do that after all the candidates?
Sheila, can I just ask a quick, did I hear you?
Yes.
You're not signing off on this?
No.
No. Yeah, so I mean, I, Bob had a couple of good points, one of which, well, no, one of which none of us actually kind of caught. And I mean, anybody in the room on Monday, when we started talking about this, really that was an impact bargaining that should have been in executive session and why we kept talking about it. Shame on all of us, A. B.
It should have been with the union.
Rep.
Rep.
Exactly.
With us.
It's something that had come up before, so maybe some of us were dealing with it almost as old business and I guess that's why we sort of all kind of overlooked that process. But Bob was really uncomfortable with that, plus the fact that we ended up adding it late to the agenda after all that. You know, I even asked him about the time sensitivity. We don't want to lose a good candidate over this, right? But I think hopefully with just a little over a week, it'll be, hopefully be okay. But in any case, anybody want to talk about Adam yet? You want to wait till the end?
I'd rather wait till the end.
Okay. I mean, I
I'd have comparisons.
Yeah, absolutely. I think probably one thing we can, or at least I can say from the beginning is this is a big, big change for him. This would be huge. And it was interesting to hear some of his takes on finance. There is, it was very clear that he has no experience with the financial issues that a town like Rutland has had. When you talk about the benefits of new growth money coming in because of construction as an all positive, that was a little bit of a
Well, that's only, that's only one aspect of a lot of issues that are sent to committee.
Yeah.
Finance committee. Personnel issues are sent to a personnel committee.
Yep.
There's one other one, too.
Well, it was the school. I think we very specifically asked him about the regional school district, which obviously Martha's Vineyard is regionalized and he did hit on the similarities of there, you know, you're sort of at their whim when it comes to the budget. But it didn't sound like he, the town administrators, or at least the Quinton TA was directly involved. It was
It was the, basically the school committee.
Well, no, it sounded like citizen representation from the town, yeah. So that was interesting.
Well, wouldn't that be a school committee, a citizen representation? That'd be a school committee.
Well, I almost think it would be along the lines of everything that we do on our side, with Margaret going to meetings, whatever. They must have had a citizen who stepped forward and said, "I'll deal from the town side with the school district." Does that make sense? That was the impression I got. A citizen volunteer.
Yeah, I wasn't clear, and I should have asked for clarification. I wasn't clear if it was a school committee group representatives or if it was a
You didn't say school committee.
Right, and he didn't, and he had said other times the definite committee names, so that led me to believe that it was a
Okay. Yeah, personnel.
Yeah.
They created personnel bylaws and everything's controlled by the personnel committee.
Yep, which he started. I mean, it's not a bad thing to have a personnel committee. But then actually he also said that HR was mostly dealt with by the treasurer. Did I hear that right?
Yeah.
Obviously, the over the levy issue was concerning. Because I guess, yeah, that's, if you're having finance meetings, at what point would a treasurer proactively
Pay off a loan.
Pay a loan early, yeah.
The treasurer should have known that the money wasn't allocated to pay out that loan.
The tax title was interesting, but it was interesting to hear that he was the one doing it. Hi.
I'm good. I'm scheduled.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Any comments from the gallery? No. He answered the budget. The other thing I did not follow up on, and actually maybe even Margaret, you could clarify this. He specifically said he wasn't certified relative to 30B, but he's listed on his resume as chief procurement officer, which made me think he must have procurement, but then he said
Yeah, so he can be, he can be designated the chief procurement officer of the town, but the chief procurement officer should generally be CMNPO, you know, certified.
Right.
I mean, that's something that he could achieve, whoever came here could achieve, but they should have that designation.
Yeah.
They just turned it into a two-day certification process when it's, you know.
Right.
It's a long drawn out thing.
Yep. No. No, I mean, that Gayhead Lighthouse project was massive, but pretty much anything he was dealing with out on the island had to do with preservation. There was nothing that he mentioned that had to do with new projects other than the renovation money they found for the town hall.
I'm curious, but I've kind of, I was looking at the resumes and
Right.
I guess one of the candidates seemed to jump right out there, the grants being pushed out of the way. So I'm interested to hear more about that and what you can think of that.
Yep.
Because the town may be in a position somehow here on grants.
So obviously, if the questions, do you want to do the same questions? Now that you've run them once.
Yes.
And I guess if something didn't work for you, obviously feel free to amend it a little bit, add to it, whatever, take out a piece. Timing wise, it seemed okay. I guess we'll see.
After the first two questions, I thought it was going to go really well.
I did too, but they kind of sped up, yeah. Well, that finance question is maybe a little bit too big, but it's probably the most important. Well, I should say that.
So I have a question. In our job description for supervisory responsibilities, supervisors for the part-time, for full-time and part-time employees. But then he mentioned under the statute, it's not his authority for hiring and firing, specifically firing is what we were
I'm not sure what statute he was referencing.
Yeah, I remember saying it, but
There are statutes for chief and it might be because maybe he has two strong chiefs. And so even the selectmen at that point don't have an informed authority, but I don't think that that, well, I don't know for sure. I would have argued that it could be his charter, if Quinton has a charter. But typically, a town administrator, the board makes that decision. It was partly why Margaret had suggested as one of her sort of exit items to do that as a bylaw addition where it was defined what those requirements are or what the responsibilities are.
And that was my understanding, but I didn't know if I missed something in my, okay.
Okay, where can we put Jeff? Laura, do you think if we put the phone on your table, do you think it'll help or make it worse?
If we had it here and then had the
All right, do you want to try that?
On the keyboard, though? I don't know.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah.
All right, Jeff, we're putting you on the podium for this one. Let's see if it works better. Probably, probably hear the candidate better.
He might hear better if the person was in the front row.
Well, oh, that's true. Let's, all right, we know what, we're going to leave you where you were, but put the candidate in the front row. All right, who wants to go get her? Should I go get her? Okay.
Eighteen inches.
Hi. Where should I go? Megan, welcome.
It's Megan, actually.
Megan, I apologize. Well, we gave the previous candidate their choice, so I hate to not give you your choice. However, we have one selectman on the phone who had a hard time and so if you're amenable to sitting in the front row. All right, great. All right, so we have Megan Donahue here. She is our second candidate. Megan, we will introduce ourselves, which we did not do the first time last time. I'm Sheila Dibb. I'm the chair. I'm in my 11th year on the board.
Wayne Walker, I'm in his second term, fourth year.
Skip Clark. 11 years.
I'm Leah Lightman. I was just elected on the board in May.
We have Jeff Stillings on the phone.
Yep.
Hello.
You are being taped for local cable. They're also putting it up on YouTube. We have a list of questions. They are all multi-parters and we'll sort of work our way through them however we can. At the end, we will make sure you don't have any questions for us. So welcome. Thank you for coming. We'll start right in with the typical, so please tell us about yourself and then tell us about Rutland and why you would make a good town administrator for the town of Rutland.
Sure, so again, my name is Megan Donahue and I want to thank you all for inviting me here tonight. I come to you tonight from Worcester. I live about 20 minutes away. It took me a lot, sooner, I got here sooner than I expected, actually, so I drove around town. I've been through here before, though, so it's not, it's not a foreign place to me. I have 21 years professional experience, 13 of which I was in higher education early on in my career. And I went to Southeastern University to receive my master's degree in higher ed. And as my career went on, I ended up here in the Worcester area and I worked at Quinsey for five years and I got a little burnt out. So I did a little step back, did some self-evaluation and I went back to school and got my master's in regional planning. And during which, and since, I've worked in the municipal field. And in different capacities, I've worked as a grant writer, economic development, and in my past communities as director of planning and community development. So the reason why I applied to this position is too bold. One is because although I really like what I do and I love where I work, I feel like it's very targeted and there's not much room for growth mentally and so forth. So I feel like the town administrator position is in forward my trajectory and that I feel like the broad experience is really what I'm looking for. And then the reason why I chose Rutland is because it's experiencing this moment in its history with the rapid growth. I did read the CMRPC report, the Phase 1 and 2, the fiscal analysis report and
No.
With that?
Oh, no.
Well, it was quite alarmist, but that made me really, it urged me to apply because I feel like my skills really can apply to this role. I might not have the traditional town administrator experience, but I feel like with my trajectory of my professional goals and my past experiences, I think this is a good fit for me.
Thank you.
All right, second question is three-part. Communication and consensus are key aspects of this job. Our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them. And town boards and committees expect the selectmen to be supportive of them. How do you interact with citizens and what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication with citizens?
Sure, so as a planner, I'm out and about all the time. I am always on site visits. I have an open door policy for my office, so people come right on in and ask me questions. And it doesn't matter what I'm doing. I will drop everything to meet with them because I'm there for the citizens. So that's really important, my philosophy. What have I done to improve? I will say in my current situation, there's always certain factions of town that have strong personalities. And this one particular project comes to mind and I did a charrette, which is a public participation experience, which they hadn't experienced before. And the two factions that were battling were affordable housing and recreation and there's this disposition of land going on right now. And one group wants it for recreation fields, one wants it for affordable housing. And I thought that there's this whole sea of people that weren't being heard. So what I did was I held the charrette and I did something called a SWOT analysis and if you've been in business, you might understand what that is, but it strengths weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that is what we kind of generalize things to kind of dismantle the recreation and affordable housing pieces. And we found out that there are other uses for the field, for the area that people wanted. So it was really interesting. I wrote a report afterwards and it was really well received by the town and it's actually still being referred to. And they just did an RFP for the land and the three top proposals that came in fit the needs of the charrette that came in. So that really was pleasing to me.
Okay, what is your experience in building and working with citizen committees? And what do you feel is a town administrator's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the board to address specific issues?
So I, that's pretty much all I work with. I sit on several committees as an ex officio, but I'm also a liaison for other ones. And I'm not going to rattle them off for you, but I feel my role is to be liaison between them and the rest of the administration. Also to advocate for these boards. They are citizen volunteers and they might not have the professional background, so I'm also there to educate them on policy and mess generalizes and so forth. So I feel it's really important to be open and receptive to them, but also to help educate them as well.
How do you, excuse me, how do you manage in a context where there is a majority on an issue, but nevertheless there's a strong minority view on the board or the town meeting?
That's always the case in any town, I feel like. So I think it's important to be able to give equal time to each faction and to know that there are, to educate the people that there are two sides of whatever the issue is and to be transparent about it too and to always put forth the information that's out there for whatever the issue is, that there might be a minority or majority. Often, most groups just want to be heard too or listened to. So really to be there to listen to them is key.
Thank you. Rutland is continuing to grow at a increasing, at a very increasing rate. What experience would you bring to the town in the area of growth management to deal with the impact?
I have a lot of experience as a planner. I bring a toolkit with me in terms of land use planning. I, you know, I was thinking about this today, what to do in terms of the rapid growth that's happening here. And I, it was hard to find, but I realized And I, it was hard to find, but I realized that the, um, well, I found that the, the master plan for the town is quite outdated, dated, it's from two thousand, I believe, or two thousand and one. And I think to update that would be key, uh, because, uh, right now, uh, you know, twenty years ago, um, doesn't speak to today. And to update that would give a roadmap as to what to do with not only economic development planning, but facilities use, I know that's an issue in town. Um, the schools and, and, you know, the other factors that go with a master plan. There are ten key processes that you have to follow to write a master plan. I'm actually in the middle of working with a consultant on one for the town that I work in now. And it's, um, it's been an education and a really good, um, way to understand the town and how, how it works, too. So it's, it's great. So I would do a master plan, I would also do a housing inventory, not, not just, um, single-family homes. I know that was been, that's been done by CMRBC. Um, but I would do an affordable housing. I think you're at two point oh, two, excuse me, two point eight, um, for affordable housing. And, uh, that's well below the, the threshold for affordable housing. And so I do a housing inventory. I might look at the zoning code and perhaps have something that would allow some more overland districts um, to have inclusionary zoning to accommodate affordable housing. And then, um, I would also look at the disposition of land of the Rutland Hospital, and I know that's for sale, or, or the town bought it, excuse me. Town bought it, but you're looking to get rid of it, if I'm correct.
There's, um, there's legislation that formed the, the RDIC, which is the Development Industrial Commission for that property in particular. It was finally conveyed to us, um, I think we're on going up six years ago now. And the for-sale sign that you must have driven by just went up recently. It's one of many options for that property. So it just hasn't been, it's really had no movement since we took possession of it. And nothing got done beforehand because we had no sense of the timeline of possession.
Sure. So I, I have had the fortunate experience of, um, working with, after the fact, after the negotiations and the sale land happened for a former Raytheon site in the town that I work in, and now they have built this beautiful campus of affordable housing, coupled with the market rate, townhouses, a memory care facility, Whole Foods, and I'm not saying Whole Foods could come to Rutland. Um, but, um, and then retail, but it's, it's, it's making this little kind of bedroom community a, a place that people can come and feel welcome, and it's a little walkable community in that, in that place. And I was thinking that could be, um, something similar could be for that site. You know, Athol is experiencing some, something similar, and I see Athol in Rutland along the same lines. And, um, you know, they're seeing some growth with their population, but they're also allowing commercial, um, industries and industries to come in to offset that tax, um, that tax burden. And I could see that happening at that site, um, as Athol has and as Sudbury has, because it's primary, it's primarily residential tax base that, that pays for everything in town, too. So, a lot of these bedroom communities, I understand that, um, that that happens. But, you know, these towns are making it work with the bringing in commercial development, but not allowing it to sprawl across the entire perimeter of the town, where they're having targeted spaces. I think that'd be a great, um, great opportunity for Rutland.
What is your experience with municipal building, construction, and renovations?
So, um, I have experience in disposition of land, of selling, um, buildings and land. I also have experience with raising funds for, um, in Sudbury, they're looking to update the town hall. It's not ADA accessible on the second floor, and I understand the annex building here is, uh, experiencing the same.
That's the actual town hall.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, I was watching the last, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting, and the annex was discussed, so. Um, so, so along the same lines, so we looked to, um, I was on something called the Town Hall Blue Ribbon Committee, and it was a committee base full of, um, both, uh, town, um, staff and volunteers. And, uh, we came up with a plan to do, uh, the preservation of the building in phases. And it involved doing town meeting, uh, presentations, and doing some fundraising through CPA funds. I know Rutland doesn't have a community preservation funds, but we, we do, where I work currently. So I've had a lot of fundraising experience and convincing the public to do it, but, um, I have not, um, gotten to negotiate any deals in that sense.
Do you have any working knowledge of Chapter Thirty-B and procurement?
So I've taken the MTPPO classes. I am not certified, because, um, my very last class, I had a front house away, and I, I missed the exam for it, and I didn't come back for it. So I'd have to go back and do it again, but I do understand procurement. I have written RFPs. I, in fact, brought an example of, I've brought some writing examples for you of, um, an RFP and so forth. So I, I do understand the process, um, but I don't, I'm not certified, so. But I understand that, that's, it is an easy process to do, and, and, um, I could do it quickly, um, because it's offered quite often, passed through the state, so.
What is your experience in successfully or unsuccessfully acquiring and administering grants?
I'm very successful, I love grant writing, if I could do it all day, I would. Um, I, that's included in the, yeah, materials I brought for you today, is a list of grants that I've won in the administration. And I've also, most recently, I won, um, the Housing Choice Designation through the state, and I know Rutland has done that. I've worked with the Community Compact, I've done Mass Works Grants, I've done, I've done playground grants, where I won twenty thousand dollars to build a playground. Um, I've applied for some ridiculous grants that, um, I was asked to write, but they just, they didn't really match the community that I was working for. They wanted me to write this, I think, I can't remember what it was called, but, you know, cities like, uh, New York City and Paris were applying for this, and this was a little chick of a bee. And, you know, they have big aspirations, but, um, so I, I do have a lot of grant writing experience, and I continue to write grants for my department, so.
What has been your experience in creating creations and providing and management of regional services in the town? In a, in a town?
I, I don't have experience in that, I'll be very upfront about that. Um, but I understand that, you know, if there was to be a negotiation, it would be with the Board of Selectmen, and I would be the liaison, um, and be their, their face and their voice at the time. And I do have negotiation experience, um, for other, um, for other situations, so I could bring that skill set to the regionalization table.
Thank you. Um, so this is kind of a multi-part, but it's kind of looking at, um, your HR responsibilities and experience so far. So, um, we kind of are interested in what kind of experience you've had with hiring and firing authority for what positions. Um, so we'll start there, I guess.
Which, which one do you want?
Um, you can kind of take it, I mean, do, what has been your experience with, I guess, hiring and firing authority?
Sure, I've, I've pretty much been able to select my employees since I started being a manager, uh, way back when, about fifteen, sixteen years ago. And, um, I've set up, I've also set up hire, search committees, and, uh, I've written questions. I've, you know, I've sat on committees, um, both in higher and in municipal world, so it's not foreign to me. I have fired two people, um, in my entire career. Um, it's never a pleasant experience, probably on, on both ends, right? Um, but it's, I have done it, and it's, um, and it's very necessary to keep records prior to, so you can, um, have that basis to, um, have an explanation as, or justification as to why it led to that point. Keep records, um, listen to all sides, too. I mean, it's not necessarily, there's not necessarily ever always a reason to fire, but it's important to listen to all sides and be consistent with the policy, too. I think it's really important to fall back on the policy for that, so.
Thank you. Um, and have you negotiated or, and/or implemented benefit changes, like for health insurance, or?
I have not, but again, it, it falls in line with being the liaison for the board. And I know as a town administrator, it's, it's not a strong manager position, so I would be there for, um, for the board, um, and conveying their message to them. Um, so that goes also with negotiations for unions with schools, because I know you have regional school here. And so for that, I very much value, um, the needs of the employees, because I've gone through the ranks, but I also know that I'm there to be the voice and to be there for the Board of Selectmen, too, so.
All right, I get the budget questions, so you ready?
I'm ready.
Um, what is your experiencing in, your experience in developing, or at least working on helping develop, a municipal budget?
I've never done the full huge budget, but I've done my own department budget, um, since I've become the director of my department. Um, I also did my own budgeting as department head in, when I was in higher education. Uh, I have taken a municipal finance course that they offer for municipalities at Holy Cross every year. I just took it in the spring, and, um, starting, gosh, two weeks from now, I'm taking part in the Mass Municipal Association, Suffolk University Municipal Leadership Program, where they will teach me how to budget appropriately at the administrator level. So I feel like I can, um, learn it, um, but it's not like I have a whole lot of experience, so.
So did you have to present your own budget at town meeting?
Not at town meeting. Um, what, excuse me, what we do, um, actually, the past two communities that I worked in is that we do our own budget forms, and then we present it to the finance director, the town manager, and, um, the, the associate, uh, the assistant town manager. So, um, we have to have justifications, we have to have all the materials that would, um, support our reasoning for the ask and so forth, and if we don't have any good reasons, uh, we're, we're kind of shoot away and asked to go redo it. Um, we, they start in November, excuse me, and then they, um, they basically tell us what we receive, um, based on the overall budget and what we've asked for. They kind of balance it out. Um, I have worked with level funding before as a department head, um, and I know you're experiencing that here. Um, and that's never easy, especially when, you know, there's such a strain on resources, um, with growth, too, so.
So you never had to present to a finance committee, you would go to the director, to the management team?
Yes.
Okay.
But I've been to those meetings.
You've been.
Because we're asked to go just in case there's questions, but they never have a question for us.
Interesting.
They always ask town administrator.
What about, uh, capital improvement? Is that something where you've had to defend a request for a larger project?
Yeah, uh, in the, not the town that I work in now, but the previous town, I asked for a plotter printer, which is the big printers that print up plans, I think of that, and I, I had to go present to the capital improvement. Just to, and what I did was I, I did my research, and I presented the reasons why we need it. And it was, you know, it was costing way too much to go to Staples all the time and have these printed. So it was, you know, in the long run, it was, it was a big purchase, but in the long run, it was, it was a need for the office, so.
So, um, the next few questions, I'm gonna ask them all at once, are very much directed at someone who has probably already had that finance municipal experience. I'm gonna sort of rattle them off, and we can go from there. Um, the town administrator in a town this size is the de facto finance director, so. Um, what is your position, if you have one, on the use of free cash and stabilization? Have you ever developed finance policies, or do you have a framework in your mind? Uh, can you define a recap sheet? And what is the most serious finance issue you've faced in your municipal career? And I can repeat any of those.
Oh, I may need you to.
Yeah.
Um, so, free cash, um, it's, it's nice to have, it's not, it's not always there. Um, but you never want to really dip into it, you never want it to be your, um, your go-to for funding anything. It's for emergency purposes only. And it should be a town meeting vote, too. I mean, it is more than likely a town meeting, but I'm hoping it is. I'm here, um, to be able to use those funds, um, with good justification. Can you give me the next one?
Uh, finance policies.
I've not had experience with finance policies.
Um, have you had any, or have you seen any serious financial issues in the towns that you have worked in?
So the previous town that I worked in, um, they saw extreme, um, issues with the delayed budget. Um, and it, it got to the point where unfortunately, um, they, more fortunately, uh, they asked the finance director to step down because of the delayed budget and, because it was just being held on to for so long, um, without being released to be used for paying, you know, any bills or anything like that. So I, I see that, that's a pretty serious, um, situation. But I, I did not have any experience with that, because I worked with, um, um, what is it called? My budgets were not effective, because I, I asked for money to come in from, you know, fees from applications and stuff.
Oh, like revolving accounts?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I couldn't do it, yeah.
Um, so how would you envision, as the finance, the de facto finance director in a town, how do you envision monitoring day-to-day receipts, expenditures, evaluating budgetary performance across multiple departments?
Well, I would work very closely with the treasurer and, I believe, his accounting office, uh, you know, the accounting firm, um, here. So I'd work very closely, um, with those people. I, I would need to bring myself up to speed on process here, and once, I under, I'm very much a process-oriented person, so once I understand the process, I could probably, um, put it to use, but there would be a little bit of a learning curve.
Uh, you alluded to this, I think, um, early on, um, that you recognized we had the whole regional school district issues. I know that Lincoln Sudbury is regionalized. What has been your experience in observing the issues of a regional school district whose budget is independent of the towns? Did that ever come into play when there was discussions of some of your projects?
No, no, any of my projects has, well, I would say, uh, with this new disposition of land and some of the RFPs that have come in, um, they're looking to do a land swap now, um, with, with an affordable housing component and being moved to that. And so they're looking to see what strain would be on the school, so I, I see it in that situation. But, and as a finance issue, I know that it's, they always, um, there's always this push and pull of the schools asking for far too much, what the perception is, far too much money than what the town can actually afford, and it's hard to balance that with the needs of paying the town employees. And, um, you know, to make that work is always, every year is a challenge. And that's offset by, you know, impact fees from projects, uh, building, um, permit fees and things like that, but that doesn't really help pay for the town staff. But when you're, you know, you're paying school department and your teachers, and they write, they should be paid very well and stuff like that, but they get paid far better than the town staff for the most part. And that's, um, from, from a department head perspective, that's, that's hard to swallow sometimes. Um, so I feel that on, as that kind of role. Um, as a town administrator, I, you know, I'd have to take that hat off and, and, uh, you know, listen to the voice of the board and, and bring that to, um, bring the needs of the town. And, and also get some transparency from the community, too, to see what they would want. Um, because I know that's probably a struggle for the community as well, not just for the Board of Selectmen here. Um, and bring that to the rest of the regionalization group, or, I don't know, sorry, I don't really know what they're called, but, um, and, um, try to convey that message of, it's, it's a tough road we're on right now, um, and but, and then with the growth, again, and growth's always a factor here in, in Rutland, that's going to put a huge strain on resources, um, both with the schools and on infrastructure and police and fire and all that. So how do you make that all work? And that's, that's a big conundrum right now.
Thank you.
Sure.
The town has several contracts expiring in June of this fiscal year, so collective bargaining experience is very important to us. What is your history with dealing with unions, union issues, and union negotiations?
So I was in a union, um, when I was in my lower lungs of my profession, um, both in higher education and, um, actually in graduate school, too, and, and, um, the municipal world. And I attended those meetings quite often, and I understand the passion of that side. But again, and I'm sounding like a broken record now, um, I'm not necessarily here for them, I'm here for the Board of Selectmen, um, to negotiate on their behalf. I do appreciate, as an employee that has run, that has risen up through the ranks in the municipal world on that side, and so I do feel... municipal world on that side, and so I do feel empathetic and I can convey a solid message to the, to the board's selectmen, but ultimately it is what the board's selectmen would like to respond to, so.
I forgot to tell you, this is a four-part question.
Sure.
What contracts have you bargained and what was your process?
In terms of collective bargaining, I, well, I, I've not personally bargained those contracts, but I, you know, I, when I started out in Webster, I was the assistant planner, which rose to director of planning and I, as an assistant planner, I was classified as a secretary, so I was in secretary union and we fought for higher pay, so on that end. So I, I wasn't part of the, the voice that went up in front of the board's selectmen or whatever, but I, I was there to support, so I don't have a lot of experience negotiating on that end, but I do negotiate quite a bit on a daily basis with attorneys, developers and so forth, so I feel like I do have pretty good negotiation skills.
Well, so the next question really does mean much. We'll skip to the fourth one. What is your experience with grievances, mediation, arbitration in relationship with unions?
I don't have any personal experience, but I will say, again, I was part of the secretary and my husband's a Webster firefighter, so I know, I, he goes to union meetings, we talk, we discuss things like that, and my brother is a police officer up in New Hampshire. We talk a lot about our municipal roles and about unions, and so I understand from that angle where it's coming from, so I, I'm respective and empathetic to that, but I don't have any experience negotiating.
Okay. Thank you. How would your staff or colleagues describe you, your leadership style?
I'm consistent and transparent. I'm kind and sometimes people see that as a weakness, but I think that gets me a long way. I, I am thorough, I do all of my research before I come into situations. I, I'd like to say I'm organized, but if you saw my desk right now, it's not, I, but I know where everything is. I, I kind of, I'd like to have a nice relaxed atmosphere in the office, but also know that we have to be there for the public and we have to be presentable and respectful and just have an open door, so.
How long do you feel it takes, it takes for a town administrator to get a complete handle on all of the town's complexities?
Well, I think it goes for any municipal role. You never learn everything. Government's very messy and it's always changing at the state level and whatever they, whatever they prescribe to come down to the local level is, is always a, a learning curve, but you know, the day-to-day stuff takes, takes a while sometimes depending on how strict the policies are and so forth and, but I, I feel like I'm a quick learner and I can really pick up on things pretty easily. I, I'm not afraid to ask questions. If I'm muddling through something, I probably will reach out to one of you to understand something. Hopefully Margaret would be available to ask after she's gone any questions, but I think, you know, what I would do is, I wouldn't just sit in my office, I would really get out there, I'd go to all the board meetings that, just to introduce myself, to understand them, I'd get out into the community, talk to the clergy, talk to the Rutland Business Association, just really get to know the town first and then all the other stuff comes with time.
What would you do in your first hundred days? You already told us.
Yeah, yeah, I'd get out there.
Sorry about that.
No, no, and you know, what I've done in every community I've worked with, I, I always ask the police chief to give me a tour of the town. I would probably go frequent the local restaurants just to see what they're all about and maybe chat with people there. I just really want to get out and understand the town, but at the same time, I would want to meet weekly with the department heads at first just to understand where they're coming from and how they feel about the transition and so forth. I'd hope to meet with all of you individually as well, just to understand where, where you'd like to see the role go and, and I would like to, Sheila, I believe you're the chair, I'd like to meet with you on a regular basis on a, probably more than once a week basis, just to, at first at least, just to understand the role a bit more, so.
How should the board, a board development and maintain a strong, develop, maintain a strong, positive and productive relationship with its administrator?
Oh, I think part of what I just said allows for that. I think continuing, continuing your education on, you know, not just, not just sitting in this room every other week and, you know, passing down local legislation, but getting, you know, going to regional or statewide education events to keep yourselves up and myself up on trends. There's a great one that's offered at Holy Cross for, it's called the Citizen Planner, but it's not just for planning, it's for anyone that wants to understand land use. I think Rutland would be a great, everyone, both zoning, planning and board's selectmen would really benefit from that and it's right up the street. So education, I think, you know, I, I, there is an opportunity just to get to know each other through the weekly meetings and so forth and even just to do a kickoff, maybe potluck and just to enjoy ourselves, just to not just be there just for business, so. I, we do that in our, in my department now where every holiday we have a little, my department's pretty small, but I have about five people and we always have a little potluck and we, we bring in food and we have lunch together and just really not talk about business for an hour and it's quite nice and we talk about our kids and all that kind of stuff, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can you please list and explain the top three most important roles, functions and/or responsibilities you see for the town administrator for the town of Rutland?
So first and foremost would be the liaison between the board and the community. Next would be the financial aspect and then I know you're hiring a planner, an economic development person, but I would really like to almost be kind of a marketing agent for the town as well to entice maybe some different development to come into town. For example, I'm at Rutland as well, I, I do have some fairly good connections across the state to do that and I would like to not step on the toes of the new planner, but help out with that, so.
So I wanted to, if I may?
We're going to do follow-up, so that's the end of the official giant questions.
This kind of hinges on just what you said, that piece of, your background is obviously in the planning piece and Rutland is hiring a planner, economic development person, so how do you see that kind of shift for you to be less of the, focusing on the planning side, but kind of taking over the whole?
I think I'd be there to help out that person if they needed to, but I'm, I'm actually very happy to step away from that role. As I grow older and, and see where my professional aspirations are in five, 10 years, I don't see myself doing planning for the rest of my life. I see myself still working for the public and municipal sounding, but I don't, I don't see myself doing planning. I will always be there to help them though and, and also to tap into resource, help that person tap into the resources, I know, and they could be a sounding, I could be their sounding block, but I, I would be very happy if I don't have to look at another set of plans.
Thank you.
Sure.
You'd still have to do that occasionally.
I don't mind, actually.
Anybody else have any follow-up? I'll, it's a little bit of a hot seat question, but it was mainly because as your second thing, you wrote the financial aspect, it's a huge piece for us. Somebody could make an argument that a municipal budget is really just an enormous amount of receipts and expenditures, but there's a lot to it. How do you foresee getting up to speed, fast enough to be able to do that and what kind of robust do you, would you envision in that process?
I'd hope to work with the board to help hopefully educate me on how you see the process going. I have saved all my materials from the municipal finance class that I took at Holy Cross and it sounds kind of ridiculous, but it will be helpful is that there's a bunch of YouTube videos that the state put out on how to do the municipal budget. I would have to watch those a few more times. I, I know that is something I, I would need to really focus on in definitely the first six months of, and, and bring myself up to speed with that, so. But there are resources out there to help you understand the process, so I wouldn't be doing it in a vacuum, you know.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do.
Anything at all?
So being that, I, I know this is, this was the first town administrator, you had Margaret back there, what would you like to see the second town administrator? How would you like to see that role because you, you've had this learning curve with the first one and what have you learned from that and how would you like to see that role move forward?
So we, there's two of us here who went longer still at this point without a TA than, than we did with, and it was a big transition for us, I think. We really lucked out the first time, there's no other way to say it, and I think moving forward, my concerns are that every single thing that Margaret got started for us continue and continue in the right direction. She had a lot of things to fix when she got here that are hopefully fixed. She had a lot of fires to put out, things that were simmering for a long time in the absence of administrator and, and they were handled. Hopefully those are things that the second person no longer has to deal with because they've been repaired, put a lot of policies and procedures and processes in place. I can certainly see more processes coming, we, we have plenty of that to do, personnel, you name it, we need more, we need a big handbook. But I think when it comes to moving in the right direction, she was getting us there in, you know, a hundred different avenues and it's going to be for this next person a matter of keeping a lot of balls in the air and juggling them, keeping up all of those projects that we've gotten going, all those good things that have started, and that is in the face of the bad stuff that happens all the time, you know, we're constantly having more small fires, hopefully smaller, to put out and, you know, it sounds like you did some research on, on the different news articles and things lately, you know, the schools are an ongoing issue with us, so, yeah.
Anybody else want to answer that?
Could you use that word?
All right. So what are your, I mean, you kind of answered them, but do you have any other expectations to say for this role besides kind of carrying the, or the torch for what Margaret's up for, so?
Any other expectations?
I think for me pers, I mean, for me personally, I think for the board, it's important to carry Margaret's kind of what Margaret has laid out forward, but it's also that fresh perspective is always needed and wanted and you're aware of the growth that Rutland has experienced recently and continues to experience and will continue to experience. So having that mind, a future mindset to not just maybe the next like three to five years, but the longer term, like you kind of said, the master plan, I think is, is a big piece of what the, the next town administrator can really bring.
Sure.
And it might, there might be resistance just because it's different than what has been. Change is hard, right?
Yeah.
For all of us.
Sure. I think we don't have that pool to sort of choose from and say, we have all this historical perspective, right? We have four years' worth of perspective and I guess my word would probably be activist. We are definitely not looking for a TA who is going to maintain the status quo because the status quo really was not working for us, so we need to fix a lot of things and repair a lot of things and improve a lot of things, so that's continuing. We have big projects coming up, things that we haven't even started yet, so.
So that goes to one of the, one of the answers that you gave, you never, you never learn everything. Things are changing all the time.
Sure.
And like you said, a new perspective is always good. That's pretty much it.
Are you okay with somebody learning some of the processes, not coming in with certain skill sets, but are you willing to take on somebody that would be able to learn?
I don't see why not. I don't think any candidate comes in knowing everything.
This is true. You don't go to municipal school.
No.
Well, I am actually.
I think it's important that we find the right candidate, the right well-rounded candidate. Nobody is going to have expertise in everything and so finding that right, well-rounded candidate and then supporting he or she in the areas to get up to speed in the areas they need to get up to, get caught up to speed in or providing support however that may look to boost that.
Sure.
So it's not a deal breaker in my eyes.
That's good.
I'll ask one more question because unless you're.
I actually have a response for you.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry.
No, it's just because you, it was a question I was going to ask you, I, I didn't, but you brought it up. I, I'm going to honestly say it's a little bit of a concern. One of the things that we had in our original prospectus when we were looking for Margaret was a seasoned professional, so to think that in your case, in, it sounds like two areas, but they're big areas, and that would be HR and negotiations, right, and, and finance, municipal finance specifically, that this would be your proving ground? Yeah, I mean, it certainly is going to give us pause because we need to think about what our structure is that would be able to provide you with enough support. Our accountant is a contractor, we don't have one here in town, so that difference that you've experienced in Sudbury with a finance director who has a staff versus what we have here, that's, it's a big difference.
Sure, I understand. I don't know if you can answer this, I, I don't believe you're in town hall every day, maybe some of you are, but how would you describe, or maybe Margaret can, describe the culture of town hall or the town staff?
Oh my gosh, it's changed over the years.
It's great.
It's good now.
It is good now.
It's good now.
No problems, not like years ago.
We definitely had difficulties over in the public safety building relative to some morale issues and, and just, yeah, the amount of teamwork and the sense of, I think, community that has improved, just it came with Margaret because people, I think, finally felt that they had someone that was going to speak for them, that was going to be that conduit, you know, and I think you brought up the word liaison a couple of times, yeah, I, I think ever since she got here, those improvements, they were, they came, you could see them coming, it came with some big giant bumps in the road, but yeah.
Sure, well, great, that sounds great. So I know I was watching the pre-town meeting forum and somebody, and I can't remember who, said that because of the budget cuts or the level funding and stuff, morale is kind of low and that was a little bit of a red flag for me, but it sounds like it's not the case or.
Morale is low. I vaguely remember something along those lines.
No, I don't see, I don't see any morale low.
No, they're all unionized now, so they got everything they want anyway, so.
It might have been finance committee.
It might have been in that context though, with any cuts to personnel, to wages and things like that, there might have been that connection there.
I'm thinking it was Lyndon, maybe Lyndon? It might have been our finance committee members who, yeah.
There's a lot, there's, Colonel would say a lot, but there's positions in town where people would go other places and make more money, but they stay because they love the town and they're dedicated to it. And a lot of those people have history at town too.
Margaret has been working really hard and made it a priority to make sure that the non-unionized staff were cared for and that we weren't overlooking them and just allowing that to sort of skate on, so, you know, I think you brought that up relative to the teachers and, you know, that sort of process between the school district and the, and the town.
I think it's not necessarily morale, I think it's the, a lot of people wear a lot of different hats because they have to because of the cuts that we've seen over the years, so it's not necessarily that morale is. So it's not necessarily that morale is low because they're, it's not a day-to-day morale issue, but it's just this sense of like, I'm doing a lot of jobs or I have a lot of hats because, and doing it because they like the town, you know? They're in it for the town.
Part of this gets back to, I think, what you were talking about relative to growth and also to the whole finance piece, which is, we had so much rapid growth, which you know so much about, that it affected us so dramatically financially that we were in a hole for a long time. And, you know, Skip and I have sat through meeting after meeting in bad years where people were looking at their couch cushions for nickels. It was that bad. And we're in a better place now. It doesn't mean everybody feels like they've yet hit that good coasting spot because we're still, we're still coming out of it, and it's taken a long time.
I guess I'll close with my questions.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions for me?
No, I think we did. Maybe, anything? This was great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
That's right, you have documents.
Do you want one for the person on the phone?
Please.
Oh, that's right, Jeff. Did you have any questions?
Nope, that was great.
We're all good. I almost forgot about Jeff. He definitely wants that, though.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, he'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. I think you know where we are right now. So Margaret is essentially right at the end, right for our town, essentially. The gentleman next to her, Bob Reed, is our interim. Because now, after four years, we clearly can't go without town administrator. And you were part of that first round of applications that came in, so we also have to go meet with you.
Okay. What is your timeline like?
So the original application process probably didn't net maybe as many as we would have liked. There's been some discussion about widening that net, but we would continue to keep the finalists that we chose out of this pool in that mix. And so timeline, depending on what happens tonight, which could change something dramatically, the timeline is pretty open. I don't want to, I don't want to, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet you. So nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board could choose to recess if you'd like before the next candidate, or if you'd like to have a discussion about each of the candidates after their interviews. You can go ahead.
We had a brief discussion about the first candidate. I think we agreed. Yeah, very brief. Did anybody want to make any sort of initial comments or want to take that recess? Take a break for five minutes?
No, we'll call it a chat.
Okay.
Yes, take a break.
Okay. All right, so we're in recess until seven twenty-eight.
Ready? Ready. Bring one in.
All right, I'm going to assume that cable is back active, so we are back from our recess at just about seven thirty, and we have our final candidate coming in, Brian LeBlanc. Come on up, Brian. So we've given our other candidates a choice of where they would like to go, whatever you're comfortable with. We've done the podium. We have a fifth member who was on the phone, but even then he was having a really hard time hearing. So if you don't want to be in the front row hot seats, go wherever you're comfortable. We can have a conversation no matter what.
I think I might be more comfortable at the podium.
Okay.
To be honest with you.
That's fine. Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
We will introduce ourselves, and then we have a set of sort of multi-part questions to get through, and then we'll give you time at the end to ask us any questions. So I'm Sheila Dibb. I'm the chair this year. I've been on the board for eleven years.
I'm Wayne Walker. I'm on my second term, so it's been four and a half years. Skip Clark, I've been on eleven years.
My name's Leah Whitebent. I was just elected on the board in May.
Nice to meet you.
All right, so welcome. We'll start off with the traditional, please tell us about yourself, but then please tell us about Rutland and then about why you are the right choice for town administrator for Rutland.
Thank you. My name is Brian LeBlanc. I'm a resident of the city of Leominster. I'm a central Massachusetts guy through and through. I was born in Leominster. And aside from three years in upstate New York while I attended law school, I've been a central Massachusetts resident my entire life. I went to college in Worcester at nearby Holy Cross and have practiced law throughout all parts of Massachusetts, ranging from the New York border all the way to the outer reaches of the Cape and everything in between. Although the office was located in Quincy, Massachusetts, a lot of my work was actually done out of Leominster because I was working 24/7. So this is my home, and this will always be my home, no matter where I go. My heart is here. So that's a little bit about me. I'm a recovering attorney. As I said before, I practiced municipal law for fourteen and a half years, and it was a great career. But there's something called business pressures in law, that the pressures to generate business. And I'm not exactly the best salesman at all times in terms of thinking about increasing revenue for business sakes for business sakes. I'm good at developing business for clients, but that doesn't always generate in terms of revenues raised for a particular business entity that I worked for. So that's why I got out. And I was privileged to be able to work for one of my favorite clients, the town of Natick, where I currently work now. And I've been there for approximately two and a half years. And I love what I do, but I feel like it's time for a new challenge. And that's why I'm looking at the town of Rutland. It's a beautiful place. It's a very bucolic community. It's faced with some challenges of its own in terms of growth and growth on the horizon. And the challenge, as I see it, is to make sure that the community grows but doesn't change its character in the process. That's why I'm applying for this particular position.
Give me one second.
You don't need to write it.
Second question is three parts.
Certainly.
I'll give them to you one at a time. Communication and consensus are key aspects of this job. Our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them, and town boards and committees expect the selectmen to be supportive of them. How do you interact with citizens? And what concrete actions have you taken in your previous jobs to improve direct services and communication with citizens?
Let me take my most recent position first, if I may. I've served as chief procurement officer for the town of Natick for, as I said before, the last two and a half years. In that time, I inherited what would be a very archaic system. Forty-eight boxes of old procurement documents, some of which went back to 1948, just dumped without an organizational system. We've organized those systems and we've put those online so that in responding to public records requests, the response can be almost instantaneous. We can locate those for boards. We can locate those for the administration. We can locate those for anyone, any part of the community on a moment's notice. That's one of my biggest, I think, accomplishments in Natick. The other aspect is the use of the website, the town's website. My predecessor in Natick had none of its procurements actually available on the website. My goal is to scan all bids within the hour and have the tabulations available for folks to download within the hour of the close of bids so that there'd be greater transparency to all. I answer all questions as quickly as I possibly can, and that's my motto.
What is your experience in building and working with citizen committees? And what do you feel as a town administrator's proper role with citizen committees appointed by the board to address specific issues?
Thank you. I've actually served most recently on the fire station building committee for the new West Natick Fire Station, and I've been able to offer, for better or worse, and they say it's helpful to them, advice concerning procurement. How would you actually build a fire station to be able to sort of say, what are the distinct phases of the project from start to finish? How do we go about hiring an owner's project manager for a particular project? In the next phase, how do we hire an architect? And hopefully, on that committee, there'll be architects. We have to see what expertise we have on that committee, and I think the challenge for a town administrator is to look at your areas of expertise on the committee. And there'll be committee members always without expertise, but it's always to see if you can engage those committee members to their greatest interest and their greatest abilities.
How do you manage in a context where there is a majority on an issue, but nevertheless there is a strong minority view on the board or in a town meeting?
Well, I think the biggest degree is we have to keep respect and civility among all sides at all times. That's not to say we sweep any particular viewpoint under the rug. Last time I checked, this country was still a democracy, and all viewpoints have the right to be heard. And in fact, in that dialogue, I think some of the best results, if it's done right, are produced. Our own constitution is a result of that particular back and forth process. So I think that it's, and this is the role of the moderator at town meeting, too, is to keep a sense of order, it's to keep a sense of respect, and it's to keep the disagreement... and it's to keep the disagreements related to the issues, not the individuals offering them. So you have times that both sides can express viewpoints, you have times for debate, then you have times to vote. And sometimes, a particular position has to win, and a particular position has to lose. But at the end of the day, there's respect for the process by which the decision was made. And hopefully, there'll be something that everyone can get as a result in the process.
Thank you.
Rutland continues to grow at an ever-increasing rate. What experience would you bring to the town in the area of growth management, and how to deal with these impacts?
While I was engaged in law practice, I had the opportunity to assist several municipalities in which we served as town council, in terms of negotiating with particular developers, and trying to work with them to minimize the undesirable, if I can use that word, or negative aspects of growth. For example, what are the strains going to be upon our infrastructure? Sidewalks, bridges, roadways, to ensure that these particular aspects of the public sphere are not ignored in the growth process.
What is your experience with municipal building, construction, and renovations?
So I think, thank you, and that was probably my biggest strength in my whole prior law practice. I was involved in a particular, as second chair counsel, for the town of Hanover. The case was Fordice versus Town of Hanover. And it involved the building of an entire new high school. And it was the first case that dealt with contracted prequalification in the state. And that particular case centered around alleged fraud in the prequalification process. The school's accreditation was on the line, and we worked tirelessly to ensure that the case was brought all the way to the Supreme Judicial Court, and the court found that there was no fraud in the process, and the school's construction continued. And it was vital to save the accreditation. That's just one example. I've counseled numerous cities, towns, and school districts, from building, you know, small additions, to wiring systems, to prevailing wage concerns, to the distinction between a 30B fixture to a Chapter 149 wiring improvement. They range the gamut.
You already said you have working knowledge of Chapter 30B, and you're already a procurement officer?
I'm the chief procurement officer for the town of Natick, yes.
What has been your experience in successfully or unsuccessfully acquiring and administering grants?
So I've been involved very recently with a low-impact development grant that the town has received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Green Communities, and I've been assisting community development with that entire process.
What has your experience been in creating and managing a regional service in a town?
As is part of Natick, for example, we've done cooperative bidding, so we're all part of the Metropolitan Area Planning Committee. And as such, we do regional procurement, base procurement. I've advised numerous cities and towns and regional school districts in terms of busing contracts in the past, funding agreements for regional school districts, and that can be quite a sort of a thorny type issue. Funding formulas, where cities and towns dispute those formulas, and where there are sort of lack of majorities in terms of the recommended budgets.
Thank you.
Thank you. We want to hear a little bit about your HR responsibilities and experiences thus far. So what kind of experience have you had with hiring and firing personnel or authority?
In the town of Natick, I do not have any direct reports. I have one person from the DPW who assists me, and in terms of that, she has her associate MCPPO, and I've sort of helped her with the experiential component of that particular aspect of her job or her certification. So that's been one of my experiences, is direct mentoring. In the law firm, I had the opportunity to mentor several other younger associates. I counseled other communities in terms of labor and employment for many years. While not a direct manager, I certainly had the opportunity to participate in labor arbitrations, labor negotiations, JLMC hearings, and several lawsuits involving collective bargaining.
Have you negotiated or implemented benefit changes, like, for example, health insurance or anything like that?
We've been involved in Natick, and I've been asked by the former, now former acting town administrator to sort of get a charge of rates and been a part of that process, yes.
All right, I get the budgeting questions.
Okay.
What is your experience in developing a municipal budget?
Having not been a town administrator and having not an entire budget to prepare of my own, it's difficult to say, but I've advised numerous cities and towns as to how to do that process in the past, how to take several different components and put them together, how to analyze changes to a particular budget from year to year, based upon forecasting. And I've also had the opportunity to develop my own suggested budget for town meeting, although the procurement department in Natick does not exactly get a huge portion of the budget.
Did you present it at town meeting?
I did not present it at town meeting.
But you provided it.
It was presented as part of the general government budget.
Okay. When you were advising some of those other communities, were any of them of similar size or complexity as Rutland?
I would say yes.
Really? Okay. We've never had legal, I think, advise us on our budget, so I'm interested.
I mean, I wouldn't say it's a soup to nuts, that we actually sat down and developed the budget, but there were a lot of questions over the years.
Questions about, okay. Have you had any working relationship with the town finance committee or with other municipalities in the advisory capacity, capital improvement committees, things like that?
From time to time, I've been called upon, in my role as procurement officer, to testify before the finance committee, and in terms of my prior legal role to do so as well. There were numerous financing questions with Department of Revenue, the use of, you know, so-called capital items for non-capital purposes. And we've had to put the brakes on those because the Department of Revenue won't exactly act nicely at the end of the fiscal year to such uses. So we've had to, you know, emphasize to certain communities that that is not exactly a desired approach.
Okay. The next set of questions is sort of testing your municipal finance knowledge, kind of some definitions. And so I'll read them all out, we'll go from there, see how this works. Obviously, as you probably found out, the town administrator for here in Rutland is the de facto finance director, so this is an important piece for us. What is your position on the use of free cash and stabilization funds? Have you developed any of your own finance policies, even in your own department? And can you define a recap sheet?
So let me take the first question first. In terms of the use of stabilization funds.
And free cash.
And free cash. Free cash is left over at the end of the year, and of course, it depends upon the community's appetite to use that money up for whatever purposes the departments want to at the end of the year. It tends to become a free-for-all, and it's important to sort of rein in the use of it, I think. That's my perspective. Because it tends to help the community's financial position in the subsequent fiscal year. In terms of stabilization funds, there may be projects for which you need to to sort of use that fund at the end of the year to enable your projects to move forward, especially if there's a shortfall. You hope that there won't be, but.
Okay. Any financial policies in the time that you've been at Natick that you have had to develop yourself?
I think in terms of the overall fiscal policy of how, in terms of procurement goes forward, I've had to work directly with those. How particular revenues are forecasted to come in for a particular project, how the budgets are looking on a particular item, whether or not it needs to go for supplemental appropriation.
Okay, thank you. The question initially is, what is the most serious finance issue you've faced in your municipal career? But I guess for you, I would say, most serious finance issue you've helped advise on. There might be one that comes to mind from all of your work at Melonson Heat.
Well, I was thinking.
Murphy, that's too.
Well, in terms of the town's overall budget, we faced a couple million dollar deficit, and we had to close it because we had a set of portable classrooms which were not immediately forecast. So as a result, that hit the budget, and the question was, what were we going to look at otherwise? Who was going to eat the deficit? Was it going to be the school district, or was it going to be the town? So that was a difficult and thorny issue.
So that was in Natick recently?
That was recently, yeah.
All right, and the last is, how do you, actually, this is second to last, how do you monitor receipts and expenditures, or how would you? And how would you evaluate budgetary performance? And obviously, we'd be talking about from the role of TA, where you are looking at oversight of multiple departments on a day-to-day basis.
Well, I think you need to, obviously, you need to keep track of your ledger at all times. You need to see what are the receipts coming in, or what are the expenditures going out? What are the different departments, how are they coming in on a daily, weekly, monthly basis? You have to review those at all times. I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Evaluating budgetary performance. So basically, you've got a department, and you'd be walking into, you know, a town that you're unfamiliar with. You have a department that has a budget in front of it, and really, we just started our budget cycle. How do you take a look at that budget, evaluate their performance over the course of the year, right? We're well into the first quarter, almost done with it.
I think you'd want to look at a couple of things. Number one, you'd want to talk to the department head about where the budget's been and where the budget is going. Past performance is likely going to be somewhat of an indicator as to where the trend should be going. Doesn't necessarily account for all of the particular circumstances that you could face, because there may be extraneous circumstances that happened in a given fiscal year that weren't present one year ago or two years ago. And I think your department heads are your best resource in terms of sort of tracking that. You have to keep the conversation going. In terms of project management, if there's a particular engineer helping out on a particular capital project, keeping in charge with your OPM on an almost daily basis is a big component of that.
All right, and the final part, you actually alluded to this. What is your experience dealing with a regional school district whose budget is independent of the town's? And I think my direct question there is your relationship where it's school-town. So not necessarily versus, but where you have these two competing entities.
Yeah, I don't have any direct experience with a regional school district in Natick because we have an in-town school system. But in terms of my past roles, there were plenty of instances where we represented regional school districts.
Districts.
Yeah, and towns, in which the communities were part of those regional school districts. So it was somewhat of a challenge, you know, when, you know, in terms of legal representation, always maintaining the professional capacity, but at the same time, always advocating for your client, but never losing sight of what the client's desire is.
When you say you were representing, was it in actual court cases, or was it in an advisory capacity?
Advisory capacity.
Advisory capacity.
I mean, I've done legal representation before, at all court levels, but never in a funding agreement type situation. Fortunately, it never got to that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
The town has several contracts expiring in June of this fiscal year, so collective bargaining experience is very important to us. What is your history in dealing with unions, union issues, and union negotiations?
So in my prior life, I was participating with other lawyers on, in terms of the bargaining process. I worked with another attorney at the firm, representing several school districts, and in terms of their police and fire, going back probably years.
What contracts have you bargained, and what was your process?
So there was a police contract back for Plymouth many years ago. I was helping attorney Joe Bartoulis on that particular process. And the party sat down, identified particular points.
How did you involve the selectmen, labor council, and department heads?
We were actually serving as labor council at that particular time. And the department heads were involved with us on an almost daily basis.
And lastly, on this question, what is your experience with grievances, mediation, arbitration, and what is your ongoing relationship with unions?
Well, in terms of the town of Natick, I'm not part of a union, I'm actually part of the personnel board. There are several unions in town. I have not been involved in any direct labor negotiations in the town of Natick. In my past capacity, you know, obviously as an attorney representing cities and towns, I was involved in the collective bargaining process in the past. Sorry, what was the other part of your question, if you don't mind repeating it?
Experience with grievances, mediation, arbitration.
Grievances would often be brought for first, second step, and we would never see them. Sometimes we'd be consulted on the phone, but most of the grievances that we dealt with as a firm were actually those that proceeded to fourth level and beyond.
Thank you.
How would your staff or colleagues describe your leadership style?
I think they'd describe an eclectic approach. I think they would say that it depended who I was dealing with. If you're dealing with a member of the public, you're going to take a very different posture than if you're dealing with, for example, and I'll go back to my previous life, an obstreperous employee, or someone who needs additional mentoring, or a long-term employee who does a good job on a daily basis. And you don't want to have an over-micro-managing style with that employee because that's just going to foster some sort of ill will. So you have to look at the situation you're dealing with. I'm analytical in that sense. And then after you analyze what posture you need to take, you need to listen. You need to step back, and you need to listen to the positions of all parties involved. Who are the actors? You have to define who those particular actors are in a given set of circumstance. And really, then identify the rest of the journalistic questions, the who's, why's, when's, where's, and how's. How is this going to proceed? And after you've done that, you talk to everybody. You repeat back what you hear, so that way, they know that you've been listening. And not only that, you understand what they're saying, so there's a meeting of the minds in that process. And then you follow to the next step in trying to work toward a way of addressing the particular issue that's facing you. And once you've done that, you come up with negatives and positives, and you make cost-benefit analyses, and you talk to anyone else who might have authority. You make recommendations, or if you have the authority yourself, you then take action. And then you evaluate, what is the results coming in from that decision? So I think it's an eclectic approach, it's a process approach. One thing I'm not is someone who will make a hasty decision or a hasty recommendation to the extent I have the time to think about it a little bit.
How long do you feel it would take, feel it takes for a town administrator to get the complete handle on the town's complexities?
I think that depends on the particular town involved. I think, first of all, that there's a rapport building with the actors involved. I think there's a rapport building with the selectmen, the finance committee, the zoning board of appeals, all of the major actors in town introducing to be visible, to start studying up, which I've already started to do here, and reading up on some of the major issues. And then you start talking to your department heads, and that's got to be from day one. You've got to know what the issues are right from the get-go. What's happening today, what do I have to do, what's the number one priority? And then that list is constantly changing, and it can change on an hour's notice. I had that happen in law practice, I've had it happen as a procurement officer. You think you're going to go into a day with, I'm going to do X, Y, Z, A, B, C, and 1, 2, 3, and at the end of the day, five other things. 2, 3, and at the end of the day, five other things, M, N, O, P, and everything in between have happened. So you, you just never can plan. That's part of the fun, too, of, of being in public service, because you just don't, you don't know what issues are going to come forward. It makes it interesting.
What would you, what would you, what would you do in your first hundred days?
I think I would do exactly what, what I was just alluding to in my previous answer. I would hope to be able to do all of those things, and to establish a set of goals, to talk to the selectmen, and to review those goals with the selectmen, to add to the goals that I would have, any goals that the selectmen would have, and any other important town actors, and work toward, begin to work toward achieving them.
How does a town administrator promote good working relationships among their town employees?
Well, I think you always have to lead by example. I think you have to roll up your sleeves and, and talk to them, and, you know, to the extent that you can help them out on any particular projects, you actually get involved in those projects to the extent that you can. You show up at the events, you, you know, roll up your sleeves and help. If there's some function at the community senior center, you make yourself present. You know, the mayor of Leominster has a saying, and, and I think it's true absolutely, 90% of life is showing up. And I, I've, I've thought about that over the last several years, and there's no substitute for it. You need to be there. You need to interact with folks and, and really hear their concerns at all times.
Thank you.
Can you please list and explain the top three most important roles, functions, or responsibilities you see for the town administrator for the town of Rutland?
Thank you. I think one of the biggest responsibilities is, is pulling various actors together. That's, I think, a, a goal of any town administrator. It's not specifically subject to Rutland. When there's a, when there's a gap, sort of in, in, in terms of service, and, and I'm not saying that there has been, but there's a turnover, in other words, you, you have to work toward bringing everyone together very quickly, and, and actually having a meeting, and sitting down, and, and listening. I think that's the first goal. The second goal is, I think, the long-term one that we've talked about at the beginning, is addressing growth. What were the actors? How were they going to interact? What are their biggest goals? And how, what is the big grand plan to address these goals? And in terms of the third, I think it's probably to increase communication. And that's communication from the office about important issues, and to address communication within as well.
Thank you.
And how to make government more accessible to all of its residents.
Anybody have follow-up?
I have a question. You had mentioned that you, when we were talking about the experience with grants, acquiring and administering grants, and you mentioned about the Green Communities grant that you're helping kind of the administering side of that grant? Is that in your current role? But do you have experience kind of acquiring grants?
One of the roles that I did in my previous capacity, I used to review a lot of grant applications. Some of the towns were more, I don't want to say hand-holding, but they would always have us review them. So I'm familiar with the process.
Okay. Thank you.
I know you can't go into detail, but I was interested. I think it sounds to me like you have a lot of union negotiation experience from that legal perspective. Can you talk about your sort of worst-case scenario in broad terms? You know, when it got the worst it could get, whether it was a really extended negotiation process, or?
There were a couple over my time, and, and there was one particular teacher's that was really bitter and really nasty. This goes back quite a few years now, and that went through several attorneys, because it was to that point where it needed a fresh face every so often. It just, the parties really, really, and this was not due to the fact that there was an effort by some reasonable people on both sides to keep all the branches out, but the folks on either side who dug in just would not move, and, and it was just not moving. And, and that, that was the issue. Eventually, it got to the point where time has a way of, of helping to resolve some things, and some of the other issues were able to be sort of massaged in the mix, and that became the focus instead of the two sticking points. And once you got those issues, and you were able to offer one side one thing, and one side another thing, more of the, and then there was also some turnover, that was able to resolve the issue. That was the worst-case scenario.
How long did it go on for?
Oh, more than in years.
What?
More than a year.
More than a year.
It was pretty bad.
Wow, all right, thank you.
I don't remember how many months, but it was-
Many, many months. Do you have any questions for us? Anything at all?
Yes, what is the town looking for in a town administrator? If I could ask you to summarize that in a couple of points.
Right, so 11 years ago, the town had finally made the position, but it didn't fund it, and it didn't fund it for another eight years after that. So it took us a long time to get to the point where everybody was on the same page that we even needed one. And of course, now that we have had one, we can't do without for even a couple of weeks. We're looking for someone who can help us maintain the pace and the level of improvements that have happened in the time that we've had this, this manager in place. We have a lot of balls in the air, we have a lot of projects going on, we have a lot of things that got repaired and fixed that we need to stay fixed. Morale is really good right now, because we do have that central manager for the first time. It's, it's made a world of difference, and so I, we are not looking to reinvent a wheel here. We needed to invent the wheel the first time, and it went really well, so we're kind of really just looking to build, build off of that and keep everything going. I, I think that, at least for me, is a primary concern, to keep everything that Margaret has put into place for us going in the right direction.
And I think also, kind of, keep everything in place, and also have that eye to the future, and know that, that we've experienced growth recently-ish, and we can, will continue to experience that growth. And so while keeping what, the foundation that's been there and everything that's going, going, but keeping that eye to the future and being innovative and bringing those new ideas.
Yes, we'll have to.
Yeah.
You know, there's an old aphorism, those who don't change get left behind, so.
Anything else?
Do you have any other questions for me?
Uh...
I don't think so.
No. I was, I was interested, and you answered it when you first stepped in, I was interested in why you had left MHTL, because you were doing so much municipal work for them and kind of seeing such a broad overview, that I was interested that you had left and gone onto Natick, which, of course, I always had an impression had a very strong municipal team, so I get it, but...
Yeah, and, and to, just to clarify my earlier answer, it wasn't so much that I wasn't happy practicing law, but it was more the aspects of becoming a partner there, and having to generate business upon business. That, that's really what I was trying to get at.
What you just said, I actually did come up with a question.
Surely.
What do you foresee would be your relationship with town council, considering your professional expertise?
I, I think that in terms of the board hiring a town administrator, I would serve as town administrator. I would not be a substitute for town council. As I told Natick when I was hired, when Bill Shenard had called me to come in for an interview, I had to tell him this. I'm not insured to be your town council, so therefore, I can't give official opinions. I can't put pen to paper. In fact, my own professional malpractice carrier, not my malpractice carrier, but my personal umbrella carrier says, every time I say something, I have to make a disclaimer in saying, I'm not giving you this opinion, and I'm not creating an attorney-client relationship.
Did you start your interview that way? I don't know if I got that on paper.
But I can, I can certainly give my opinion, my lay opinion, on anything, and I, I often am called to do that on multiple times per day, and I, I probably sometimes give my opinion too much on particular issues, but I, I know when to keep my mouth shut. In addition, I'm still called by my old firm, which I'm happy to, and I'm still maintaining my memberships with the Mass Municipal Lawyers and Mass Bar and American Bar, so I, I'm happy to still be in the professional community.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for coming in and staying so late.
Thank you, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Really appreciate meeting you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Brian.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, um, did anybody want to have any broad discussion? Do, would, would you like to sleep on this and let Jeff get caught up?
No, I think we should.
Okay. And then hopefully Bob will come back, he was checking on the door, right? The only other thing we have on our agenda, if we are going to put off the discussion for a little bit, we did note earlier that that letter of agreement needed to be held off to confirm a couple of things with legal and some questions that Bob had, and then under Old Business, we wanted to do a quick DPW director search process and update. And did you want to add anything, Margaret, or are you just?
Well, I think Bob wanted to participate in this.
Yes, yeah.
I can tell you that the town received four resumes. Now, while the, the candidates from, that submitted resumes may very well have good qualifications and may be strong, I don't see any reason why the town wouldn't look to diversify the pool of candidates a little bit. We're just talking a little bit about the four resumes that were received for DPW director.
Just, just started.
Yeah, so, and I just mentioned that the town received four, and while the candidates may have very strong credentials, it probably wouldn't hurt to expand the search a little bit, just to diversify the pool. I mean, four is a very low number.
Very low, so how, how long has the ad been off? You know, I went on MMA, I don't know if it was ever on MMA, but it's certainly not on MMA now.
It's been off for a full month, uh, almost a full month. The ad expired on July 31st.
Okay. So is the board amenable to re-upping our advertising?
We'd actually, I think that, this is going to be up to Bob, but I would, go ahead, I'm sorry, you can, you can chime in if you'd like.
No, go ahead.
I would, I mean, we didn't hit, for example, we didn't hit the Mass Highway Association. We didn't hit Mass Waterworks Association. We really stuck with MMA, which is not a bad, it's not a bad advertising venue, but it's not necessarily hitting DPW directors. So Bob may have additional thoughts, but those, I think those are some areas.
Yeah, I think Margaret's right. I think the professional journals are important. Also, if you're advertising with the MMA, and I think that would be true of both the DPW position and also town administrator, you're not going to have people from out of state. Why? Which, you know, I, I think would be very beneficial, if you're talking about, you know, close proximity. But I don't know, I don't know what to say about the candidates. I mean, you know, I'm talking about DPW now, you know the candidates.
No, they don't. No, they don't. They don't know the candidates, because we haven't-
I mean, at least, at least one of them.
Yeah.
No, not officially. So we, we have not had any release of their candidate names.
Oh, okay.
So, okay, so let me amend that. So is the board okay with, and I'll be honest, I guess I had to-
Expanding the search?
Well, not just expanding the search, but continuing the search. I, I'll be honest, I think I had in my head that we would be advertising until filled, not that we would sort of stop.
Until filled, yes.
Yeah, so let's, and if until filled means the venues that you were saying as opposed to MMA, I'm fine with that, but we need to advertise somewhere, because we basically spent a month, now we know why we didn't get any other pages in the past month, we didn't advertise for the job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I think if we're reopening it, it needs to be more than only what we did before. If there's additional venues that we can target, then we need to target them, because we need more than-
I wouldn't even call it reopening. It's a continuing venue.
Just expanding, just to differ, yeah.
Yeah, yep, yep.
Whatever you call it.
So we've got two sort of parallel questions to ask ourselves. One is, do we want to have a further conversation about what we're going to do with the position, you know, relative to, are we changing any structure? And we can talk to Bob about that, I'm not saying we would have that discussion tonight, but something to start thinking about, maybe you want to go online and start looking at structure in some of the departments.
This is still for DPW?
This is still DPW, for, in some other departments and other communities, because we have grown significantly since we've really ever had, since we've had this discussion, if we ever did. And we might be looking at something different, and it might be significant when it comes to who we want in that position. Are we looking for a more administrative role, or are we looking for a more hands-on role? I think that's going to come with the size of the position. Yeah.
I think it all depends on whether they, it's split off, to water sewer being one entity and-
Yep, yep.
So I mean, we're, we're up here, we don't even know what's down there.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it's cart before the horse. What do you do first? So we know we're moving forward with water sewer, we've got some of that going on, but I think, I, yeah, I, I think we do need to start working more directly on the whole water sewer district thing. That'll make a big difference, once we get that settled. Uh, yeah, I thought I had something else, but I can't think what it is.
You said it was kind of two, two directions.
I did, yeah, I did. I'm trying to make your mind- Oh, no, I know what it is. It was something Bob brought up. I think we are bordering on our 100-day mark, and at this point, are nowhere near hiring anyone, right? We've had very few applications, no interviews yet, and Bob brought up the possibility of an interim DPW superintendent as well, and that process, we might need to at least start sending out feelers. He had recommended the firm that came and bid out initially when we were doing our professional search the first time for TA. So that was the other firm, and they're based in Southern New Hampshire, right?
That's the same firm that did the assessment centers for police and energy.
Right. They, they, unlike Collins, are not just a search firm, they also keep kind of a stable, right, Bob, of available candidates?
Well, they do, and I think, I guess I was going to get to this, depending on how, how you wanted to handle continuing the search. I mean, I, I think that they, through all of the different towns that they have worked with, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, they do have a network of people that they're familiar with, and that, along with advertising a little more broadly, I think would certainly cast a much wider net, whether it's for the DPW position or for the town administrator position, depending on where you go there. But if you were just talking about an interim in the meantime, then, you know, certainly I think they would, they would suggest some names.
So, does the board feel like, based on where we are now, we can, I don't want to say risk, but sort of risk the idea that we will have somebody in before December 4th? Or do we start pursuing the possibility that we will need an interim? And now, that could be an internal candidate, too, which would preclude the need for, for what Bob was talking about, but it's something that we might want to put, I feel like our agenda's already getting really big for the 10th, but we might want to put it on the agenda for the 10th, especially if you thought, you'll only be a few days in, but if you thought we could have some conversation about costs, and what our options would be relative to broadening the search, possibly hiring an interim, and when that would be.
Well, I did speak with Alan Gould of MRI, and I worked with him in Upton.
Yep.
They did the search in Upton. For, again, I'm just throwing out numbers, and I don't know if you, how much you've discussed the TA position or where you want to go, but just for a frame of reference, if you were to renew the search and use a search firm or use MRI for the town administrator search, and I can get into details, or you could ask Alan Gould to come down and, and talk to you, but they would handle all of it, from soup to nuts, and this includes background search, background checks, financial, et cetera, for under $10,000. For a DPW director, they could do it significantly cheaper, probably because they wouldn't be working with a steering, screening committee, et cetera, and it's more of a direct process. That would be about $3,500.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we do. We need to put that on our next, next agenda. So can everybody put some thought into that?
Three months goes quick.
Three months goes quick.
I was just thinking that, real quick.
Yeah, and we had, you know, we talked when this first came up about having some overlap time. We have winter operations coming up, we'll have plowing issues, so, yeah. Yep, a lot going on. Does anybody have anything else?
So, we're going to tell them to start advertising, re-advertising the positions? Are we going to wait for another week or two weeks?
No, I thought we did, didn't we?
Yeah.
Did you, did you leave that? Did we?
Did we renew the ad with the, with the MMA?
To re, well, I don't care where it is.
Where you want to go.
Mass Highway with Mass Waterworks, the other agency.
I mean, we can do a motion if you'd like. Absolutely, Skip. But, yeah, I thought we were all in agreement that we wanted to post right away.
The expression on Bob's face is like, "Where am I going? Am I going to the guys in New Hampshire or what? Are we looking at monies or what?"
Right, right, right.
I guess I just need to know what it is that you want to do. For the time being, you want to reopen the search and do the same advertising as has been done already?
I think what I'm hearing is MMA wasn't super helpful. We need to do Mass Highway, Mass DPW instead. I don't know that, would that have significantly changed the costs? Because those costs to advertise are going to be the same whether we do it or MRI did it, right about? Or no? Because I see what you're saying. You're basically saying, if you want MRI to do it and take it soup to nuts, then we wouldn't be the ones calling to advertise on Tuesday.
Right. And they, I can't give you specifics, but they would probably handle the advertising a little bit differently, not just where it is, but how it's written and so forth, and what the steps would be.
So maybe it's the money talking. I'm not as intent on the whole TA thing. Maybe it's because you're sitting there, and we know we have you a few days a week. DPW, $3,500. Is that money well-spent? Do you want to go that route? It does open up the door for them finding us an interim candidate if the search didn't work in time.
What would be the cost to us if we did our self-advertising, just monetary cost, like for those postings?
I mean, several hundred dollars.
Right. So I'm just thinking if it's, I don't know how much minus, if we're paying $3,500 minus whatever our cost to post ourselves would be, but they might be able to get us more...
Mm-hmm. They might.
Qualified or a broader net of candidates.
Mm-hmm.
I can get specific numbers for you. We did talk about the cost of advertising for the town administrator position, and Alan estimated that at around $1,000. So how that relates to DPW, I don't know.
Were they less interested in DPW? Were they looking to do a...
Well, I, my call primarily was town administrator. And so the DPW was a comparatively short conversation compared to all that they'll do with the town administrator search. But, you know, I did want to get a number from him. And, you know, he did say it was a much more expedited process.
Okay.
Where, you know, they would just ended up presenting the board, however many candidates you wanted, three, six.
With them, do you think that we would be off the hook for an interim then? Or might we still be looking at an interim if, for the DPW?
I don't know.
I don't know what their timeline is.
I don't know.
I mean, I guess it depends.
It's more about us. You know, they, I think they probably have a goal of getting X amount of applications percentage-wise, you know, from their net.
Right.
And then it's up to us to decide if, God forbid, there's nobody in their first round.
Then it's...
Yeah.
How much notice the person would have to give when they're employed.
I think, yeah, we're cutting it really close at this point. Really close. It's on the agenda. Certainly, expenditure is not on the agenda, but if people were comfortable with the idea of a around $3,500 cost, which we need to find that money, it's not like we budgeted it. And I think pulling it from the DPW wage line item is going to be problematic on its own, although in fairness, I think that line item's going to have to be looked at anyway for Fall Town Meeting. We're going to have overlap. I mean, I know we have a little bit built in, but... So. Anyone?
What else?
Well, it's move ahead with MRI or move ahead with just getting back to advertising on our own, or it's waiting until the 10th, to your point, week and a half away.
There's no reason to wait.
No.
We can make a decision right now.
Yeah, I think we should, if we could find the money, we should go with the...
That's what I'm leaning towards, if we can find the money, because I feel like...
Yeah, if we spend $500 doing it ourself and then, you know, yeah.
We can find the money.
Just make it sound so easy.
Yeah, I know.
I don't have the budget sheets in front of me, Margaret. I'm trying to think where we'd be flexible enough in wage and then replenish wage at Fall Town Meeting.
You can't spend it from wage at this point without the town, without town meeting's approval. So it would have to come from an expense line, and you could replenish the expense line.
The expense line. So supply, yeah. Yep.
Snow removal or whatever.
Well, I don't think we can take it from snow. I don't think we can take it from snow.
No.
No.
You couldn't take it from snow, but you could take it from any other one of the operator expense lines.
Yeah. So, I mean, the money is there. We are early in the season. It is replenishable, assuming free cash is available to us. Obviously, this would be high priority to replenish it. And again, do what we needed to do, because most likely that line item for wage as well is going to have to be looked at. So if we're okay with it, we should probably do that.
Make a motion to do that. How's that?
MRI.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All right. And so the content of this is to authorize Bob Reed to begin the process of contracting with Municipal Resource, Inc., is it Inc.? Municipal Resource, Inc. for a DPW superintendent search, director search, sorry.
ASAP.
ASAP.
It's not there, so we didn't hear it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any questions? All in favor?
Right.
Unanimous? All right. What? Leo?
Either of us.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yep.
Bye. Good night.